It's five o'clock and I would like to call the May 28, 2025 Town Council meeting to order if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, Caitlin, do we have any additions, deletions?
No, Mayor.
Counsel, if it's okay, I'm gonna pull item 12 from the consent agenda, which is the native plant donation, just to make a quick statement at the end. So I'll move that to number 15, if that's okay.
I would like to move item number 11. We could have that as number 16. That is something that we do need to vote on tonight. It's a critical issue, so just make sure that we have enough time at the end of the meeting. I would say 20 minutes, so everybody can say five minutes.
Item, I'm sorry, Dana.
Item 11, just make sure that 20, like 20 minutes till the end of the meeting, we have.
Oh, yeah. No, I'll make sure. It's very, it'll be very fast.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that okay? Do we get a consensus?
Is that a consensus for item number 11 and 12?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have one more question on item 14. Do we want to move that earlier?
Now, I think we have a lot of people here for the number 13, so I think we better
Okay.
just kind of leave it there. Did I say, Caitlin, number 11 or 12? I said 12, correct?
Yes. Vice Mayor Protim Davis said 11, and Mayor, you said 12.
Okay, so you got it. All right, presentations. We have a ceremonial swearing in, and I'll go ahead and let the chief take over again.
You probably had enough of me already. Ethan, come on in. This is gonna be the ceremonial swearing in of our newest officer, Ethan Curry. Welcome. Officer Curry joined the Juneau Beach Police Department, I'm sorry. Officer Curry joins the Juneau Beach Police Department after three years being a member of NYPD. I swear it's not a pattern. But I can tell you with three years in NYPD, it's like a lifetime in most places. So he comes here with great experience. And again, just like I say all the time, we go through a lot of applicants to find the right one. And he's got the temperament and the personality and the drive to be a member of our department. And like I said, it took us months to find the right person. And we actually found two or three good ones at the same time, which also happens. But we expect big things out of Ethan, and he's originally from Long Island, New York. Ethan attended Russell Sage College in Albany for that. Ethan is married and has one daughter with another due in July, right?
Yep.
So I just want to congratulate you. And I've seen you at work already for the last couple of weeks. And I can tell you, we didn't make any mistakes with Ethan. He's gonna be a great addition to our police department. And we look forward to big things from him. So welcome aboard.
Congratulations, Officer Curry. Our next presenter is going to be from the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, and it's District Chief William Rowley. And he's gonna be presenting a brief fire rescue annual report for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Counsel. Thank you for your time. I know you have a very busy agenda, like you always do, so I'll keep it brief and leave it open for questions afterward. Juneau Beach, the call statistics for the year. Basically, we totaled out at 1,1112 incidents. And you see typically throughout the county, this is how they're pretty much set up. It's majority of our calls are EMS. And you see as they go down, all the way down to hazardous situations and the water-related incidents, which obviously the amount of beachfront you have. Primary response units is Station 15, which you have the ALS rescue there. You have a brush truck and an aerial truck. The aerial truck staff with four and the rescue staff with three, all of them ALS. The additional response units around is 16, which is over in Jupiter on Military, and 18, which is up at Burt Reynolds Park. And also from the south, you can, you also have Station 68 coming up from Lake Park. Station 15, those are the units that are configured there and the station. One of the things we're pretty proud of for the organization is, is one of the things when you look at your organization, you say, well, we think we're doing great. But it comes down to it is everyone, when they look at themselves, obviously will have a little bit more of a skewed perspective on what they think of themselves. So what the department did was, we hired the Baldridge Company, a firm to come in and do surveys for us. What they did was, they surveyed 2,400 EMS calls and then specifically into each of the municipalities. And these are the type of questions they ask. And when it came back, it came down to it is, we have 100% overall satisfaction rating on every one of the calls. And this isn't a mailer where somebody, you know, goes out in your mailbox and checking in. These are phone calls where they speak with the individual and get their true feedback on the incident, on the calls, and how they felt about our service. Depth of service, this is what you get with Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. 51 stations, 171 units throughout the county. At any given time, depending on how busy your area, your municipality is, there's units moving in from other areas on the north end. But also, if the north end is busy overall, there's units coming in from down by Okeechobee Boulevard. They're coming in from the acreage area. The county, the dispatch center is always looking to move units in when there's any gaps in coverage. So with that, you get significant depth of coverage, everything from chief officers all the way down to the ALS units. Other thing you have up in the, in the north end here is you have the two jet skis that run out of Station 18, which definitely service the Juneau, because we've been, we've done rescues off of the Juneau Pier with those jet skis. Just briefly on the evolution of EMS services, response to the outbreaks and pandemics. These are things with the, again, the depth of coverage and the size of organizations, we're able to stand up these type of things, basically when things happen that aren't unexpected. The mobile testing during the outbreaks, vaccinations, screening areas, response to the opioid crisis. Our mobile integrated health services, which is staffed with licensed clinical social workers and paramedics. They address addiction services. They also address high-frequency utilizers and chronic disease management. They go out and they'll do pregnancy outreaches and cardiac survival outreaches. So again, the other services that we provide out in the community. Other services with our EMS is the whole blood and plasma program, ultrasound and finger thoracotomies. And in reality, what you're getting is, you're getting the trauma ER coming out to your scene. And these are specialized skills and specialized equipment that are carried by our EMS captains that are stationed up here and respond to any of those types of calls in the area. Pediatric and adult grief counseling is another service provided by our mobile integrated health, the licensed clinical social workers. So when there's fatalities, deaths in the family, they'll come out and they'll, they'll meet with the family of the call, of the incident and see what their needs are and provide some counseling. We look at ourselves as an all-hazard fire rescue, a fire department. So all hazard meaning just not EMS, not just fire. We have the jet skis, which I mentioned, up off of Burt Reynolds Park, that responded to the area. Those, we have two there. We have two also in Lake Worth. We have airboats stationed out west, swift water boats, which can be deployed anywhere. Basically, you know, we don't think about here having swift water like you think up north. But in reality is, it doesn't take more than, you see with the hurricane coming, they talk about the depth of the water. It doesn't take much of the depth of water, much of a movement of water to be a hazard. So we have swift water teams, and we also have the only USAR team in the county, our Urban Search and Rescue Team, which is a type three team. The only other type three team closer to us is down in Miami. ISO rating, basically is you're, we're an ISO one rated department. That's the highest rating you can get. What they do is they evaluate our operations, our water supply, communications, and community risk reduction. Out of 40,000 departments in the nation, there's only 388 that are ISO rated one. And out of that, there's only a handful that are ISO rated one that are a metro-sized department like us. And it's a significant accomplishment, and you know, we're very proud of that. And it takes a lot to get there. And I said I was gonna make it brief. And thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Anyone have any questions?
No.
No?
Just thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question on changes coming to Jupiter. How will that affect the service to Juneau Beach when Jupiter goes to their new department?
Well, we're not closing, we're not closing any of our stations up here. We'll be relocating one, the one up at Burt Reynolds Park, we're keeping open. And the one over on our Station 19, our headquarters station where special ops, our hazmat team runs out of, we'll be staying there also. So it doesn't, it doesn't change our footprint because we have communities up here that we still need to serve, we service. We have unincorporated county areas that we need to continue to service. So no, we're not, we're not going anywhere.
Thanks.
Do you have a question? No? Okay, now go ahead.
Chief Rowley, I just wanted to say thank you to your team and to the Palm Beach County Fire Department for your service to Juneau Beach. You were very early on reaching out to me to welcome me to the town and to assure us that we're, you guys are there for us whenever we need. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did all that. Thank you so much for all your service and everything you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next awards are gonna be the Employee of the Year. And it looks like I need a motion for this one, because we have two Employees of the Year, and so I need a motion to approve. Did you have a motion listed here? I need someone to make a motion for the approval of the Employee of the Year, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Employee of the Year for two employees, Mr. Tim Hannan and Mr. Frank Davila.
I second it.
With the funds coming from contingency.
I second it.
For the awards.
Thank you, Dana.
I'll conduct the roll call. Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasta?
I thought you were going out.
If you want.
Councilmember Hasta?
Aye.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
All right. So for the first time in the history of Juneau Beach, we are proud to recognize not just one, but two outstanding individuals as our 2024 Employees of the Year. It's Director of Planning and Zoning, Frank Davila. And Deputy Director of Public Works, Tim Hannan. Both Frank and Tim have gone above and beyond over the last year, with each taking on dual roles as they ensuring that the town operations continued efficiently and without delay. Their dedication, their adaptability, their work ethic have made a lasting impact on Juneau Beach. What makes this recognition even more special is that it comes from their peers. From multiple departments nominated Frank and Tim for this honor, a true testament to the respect and appreciation they've earned across the organization. So please join us in celebrating Frank and Tim for their exceptional service and unwavering commitment to the town of Juneau Beach.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, next we have comments from the town manager. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it isn't too often that I get to re-recognize so many of our employees, but I'd like to take a moment to do that because of the exceptional service that we've received and to once again honor those people that received recognition this evening, including Officer Robinson, Sergeant Kenny, Sergeant Racini, Assistant Chief Saloyo, Allison Lynch as a civilian, Nick Stivola as one of our police volunteers, and of course, our Employees of the Year, Frank Davila and Tim Hannan. Thank you very much, everyone, for your service and those members of the community that support our organization and town. People like Lori Simmons and Mr. Nelson Ferreira, thank you as well. And to any other Juneau Beach residents that are active in local government, we certainly appreciate your efforts to help make this town the best that it can possibly be. In addition, I'd like to both the Pride's Council and the community that we're underway now in looking at our fiscal year 2526 budget. We're in the process of working with our department heads to help them refine their proposals. We'll be coming back to council with a budget presentation around June 25. And in between then, there will be an extensive amount of work going back and forth with our directors with respect to their proposals, and again, refining them so that once we do present to council and the public, it'll, it will be a very informative session and will be very strategic in setting a vision for our next fiscal year and beyond. Finally, I neglected to mention a welcome to Officer Curry, as well as our new police officer. There is one last item that I have, Mayor, and that is to request council consensus to schedule an executive session on June 25 at 3:30 PM for purposes of collective bargaining. So I need consensus from council to put that on schedule, and we'll proceed accordingly.
What day of the week is that? I don't have a calendar with me.
It's the same day as our regular council meeting, but just earlier in the day. So we would start at 3:30 instead of 5 o'clock.
Okay.
Absolutely, that's fine.
Excellent. We'll proceed with that then. Thank you. And that concludes my comments for today, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Do we have comments from the town attorney?
No, Mayor. I did, I'm in the process still of compiling the legislative update. I just didn't get it done in time for this meeting. And there are still some things that we're hoping the governor will not sign, such as Senate Bill 180. But I will have that to you as soon as it's done. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Public comments from staff?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Comments from the public? And this is any comments that are not related to our agenda items.
Yes, Mayor, I did receive public comments via Zoom, so give me just a moment. The first one is Scott Shaw. Mr. Shaw, your three minutes for public comment starts now. He unmuted himself. Mr. Shaw?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Your three minutes for public comment starts now.
Okay. My name is, okay, my name is Scott Shaw. I reside at 400 Apollo Drive. Thank you for hearing me out. Why do we constantly?
Hear you.
You've cut out and we can't hear you.
Scott, I don't know if you can hear us, but we can't hear you right now.
Can you, can you hear me again?
Now we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, I was saying, why do we constantly hear that harmony is subjective?
Scott, I don't know if you cut out again. Do you want to try coming back into the Zoom? Can he do that, Caitlin?
That's a recording there. You're playing back my recording.
Mr. Shaw, is your YouTube version off? And you're just on your Zoom?
Do you want to allow him to go back out, Caitlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Do you want to restart your Zoom login?
We're gonna go ahead and move on, Mr. Shaw, and then we can come back to you, okay, and see if we can get a better connection.
The next one on Zoom is Mr. James Errett. Mr. Errett, your three minutes for public comment starts now. Mr. Errett? You're on mute? Mr. Errett?
Yes?
Your three minutes for public comment starts now.
Okay, thank you. I stand before you today, unwavering support of aesthetic zoning and architectural review, critical tools in safeguarding property values and preserving the character of our beloved Juneau Beach. Lately, a campaign of misleading mailings and texts have attempted to distort the truth under the banner of property rights, suggesting that these principles somehow restrict homeowners. As a member of planning and zoning board at both 24 and 25, I can confidently say that 75% of the residential applications we reviewed were approved, featuring substantial increases in building sizes. But these expansions were undertaken thoughtfully in harmony with the surrounding community and in consideration of essential factors. Let me be clear, voting for harmony does not mean denying homeowners the right to expand their properties. Growth and change are welcome, but they must be responsible in ensuring that what is built enhances rather than diminishes the aesthetics and character that defines our community. Because buyers seek neighborhoods with cohesive design and visual appeal, look no further than Coral Gables, Miami Beach, Winter Park, Florida communities, which are very desirable. In Palm Beach County, where historic homes stand alongside new developments, aesthetic zoning ensures what progress works for us, not against us. It is key in protecting the value of what makes Juneau Beach unique. Some argue that the term harmony in zoning laws is too vague. However, courts in Florida and beyond have repeatedly upheld its use as long as it's defined clearly and applied consistently. Furthermore, there are valid concerns about inconsistencies when analyzing application with a 300-foot radius, as my fellow P&amp;Z appointee, Jim Ferguson, has pointed out. Addressing these concerns thoughtfully allows us to refine and improve our process. Importantly, harmony does not mean uniformity, rather it ensures that new construction respects its surroundings, maintains the rhythm, scale, and style of the neighborhood while allowing for creative expression. One of the biggest threats to our neighborhood is cohesion is oversized, out-of-scale development where homes dwarf their surroundings. Final thoughts. I have provided with council a three-page list of Florida communities that have successfully implemented, implemented various aspects of aesthetic review and what the elements they have done. Without these protections-
And I'll give you another 30 seconds, okay?
Yeah. Without these protections, our quaint town risks becoming another overdeveloped, supersized Florida community, losing the very essence of what makes Juneau Beach, Juneau Beach, as everyone likes to say. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I had a comment request via Zoom from Ms. Siobhan O'Donnell, but I do not see where she's on Zoom. She did submit, in case you cannot appear Zoom for the record. The next that we have is Cynthia Frazier.
This is for, is this?
Comments not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. Okay.
Give me just a moment. The microphone seems to be off.
There, hello. Good evening, Councilmembers. Cynthia Frazier, 1705 Floral Drive, Juneau Beach. I'm inquiring on the status regarding the longstanding issue of the unpainted walkway lines in the Ocean Ridge neighborhood. This matter has been raised multiple times over the past year, yet there appears to be no visible progress regarding a solution. Clear and properly maintained walkway lines are not just a matter of aesthetics, they are a basic safety requirement. The current condition of these walkways increases the risk of accidents for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers alike. It is deeply concerning that this might take a serious injury or even the threat of legal action for this issue to receive the attention it deserves. I respectfully ask for a clear update on the status of this project. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you.
Other comments I received are for agenda items.
Okay, Cynthia, we'll have, someone get back to you on that, okay? All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I make a motion to move the, to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second the motion.
I'll conduct a roll call. Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasta?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Okay, now we're on to discussion. Appearance review criteria for single-family homes. Before I start, I want our residents to know that the agenda item this evening is not about council trying to get rid of our building codes in town or do away with harmony, because harmony is actually embedded in our zoning codes. This agenda item is about a code that had already changed in 2024 that affects single-family homes only, and it needs to be revisited. The council members, I know that there's been some emails that betrayed this agenda item, and I think it's been a little confusing to the citizens. And so I just want to make sure that everyone knows that no one up here is arbitrarily trying to take away codes and harmony in our town. The key to this agenda item is to see if council can work together to make sure that single-family residents are not losing property rights and to find a solution for those who don't want to see larger homes built next to them. So that's really our goal up here. And Caitlin? And Caitlin, I can start with public comments, or we can let Frank do his presentation? What would you like to do? Public comments? All right. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thanks for having me this evening. My name's Chelsea Lucas, and I am a 30-something-year-old. I live behind the recently approved 7,000-square-feet home off Diana Lane. I'm here tonight to express disappointment, but also raise a red flag about what this approval signals for the future of this neighborhood. This home, this home approved on a lot surrounded by 3,000 square feet average residence is completely out of scale. It's more than double the size of the neighbors, and the decision to follow feels disconnected from the values that draw people to this area. It's, it's not just any neighborhood to me. My family's lived in the area for generations, while my grandparents even lived here in the 1970s and 80s. I'm not just speaking as a neighbor. I'm speaking as someone who has deep ties to this community and a genuine stake in preserving it. I've attended several of these meetings, and I want to be honest, it's very discouraging. On more than one occasion, I've witnessed the behavior of the mayor that has come across as dismissive toward residents who have raised valid concerns. These meetings should feel like a safe space for public input and not a hostile environment. We deserve respect and transparency when we see, when we speak about these issues that impact our homes, our families, and our livelihood. That said, I want to acknowledge DeeDee and others who have consistently have this community's best interest at heart. These select few stand out and are true advocates of the voice and voice a reason to these discussions. Beyond these concerns, there are serious issues at stake. The lot in question will be, will be almost entirely built over. Between the home's footprint, the driveway, the walkways, and the pool, there will be little meaningful permeable space left, and we've seen, we've been seeing that, these recently built throughout the town. This is hazardous. Premium, oh, permeable surfaces are essential for managing stormwater, preventing runoff, and protecting infrastructure. Overdevelopment, a lot on, overdeveloping a lot with concrete rooftops puts strains on storm drains, increasing flood risk, and disturbs the natural charge of the water table. There's also an economic cost. These oversized luxury-style homes raise property values across the board, pushing up taxes and making neighborhoods increasingly unaffordable for young families, first-time buyers, and longtime residents on fixed incomes. Every time one of these mega homes are developed or developments are approved, it sends a message that this neighborhood is no longer meant to be accessible. It's meant to be exclusive. The home behind me, the home behind us has already been approved.
You've got 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Okay. I'll tighten it up quick. People move here for the quaintness, the greenery, the beach, and the balance of family. If we're, if we keep greenlighting developments that prioritize size over substance, that balance disappears, along with affordability, accessibility, and the sense of belonging that makes this neighborhood home. Please take this moment seriously, and let's not allow, let's not allow these approvals to become a precedent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tom Kelly via Zoom. Your three minutes, public comment on agenda item number 13 starts now.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Tom Kelly. My wife Patty and I live at 430 North Lyra Circle, and we've been there since 2015. My dad bought his first condo in Juno Beach in 1972 at Juno by the Sea, Unit 408. He then bought a unit in Brigadoon, kept the other condo, and bought that in 1980. And then Patty and I bought a unit, 802, in Oceanfront in 1998. We sold those condos when my father died in '06, and I sold mine in 2011 due to the financial crisis. We then leased a home on Seaside Lane from 2011 to 2015, and then we bought our current home at 430 North Lyra Circle, 2015 to present. Our family's been involved with the community for 53 years. My dad was the one that bought the property where the church moved, so the town of Juno Beach could have its town center where it currently resides. So our family's commitment to Juno Beach has been strong and unwavering. My concern with the definition of harmony, I love harmony. I've seen it work its magic for 53 years in Juno Beach, is that the 300-foot average rule is somewhat unfair to people, depending on what street they live on. And the unfortunate part about this is a current buyer of a home or a lot is unclear or uncertain what they'll be able to build, which means that buyers are not going to necessarily buy a home. Patty and I bought our lot on Diana Lane, and we would not have bought that at the price we paid had we known about this ordinance of the 300-foot rule. It brings uncertainty and a lot of question to what you're able to do with the property. And a lot of these homes were built when I was here in the 70s and 80s. So these homes are 50 years old, and some people find that they need to be remodeled, renovated, or in some cases, torn down to build new homes. If you tell these buyers there's uncertainty with what they'll be able to do with the property, they may not buy. Less buyers means lower prices and longer times to sell. We have roughly 300 standalone homes in Juno Beach. Realtors that I've talked to, six of them specifically, think that this rule will cause these properties to devalue by approximately 20%. That means Juno Beach property values will go down by $75 to $90 million if this is the case. Many long-term Juno Beach residents need and want this appreciation, as it may be the large part of their estate. They need this money to be able to transition to a further place to live as they age out and get older. I would hate to see these people lose $200,000 to $300,000 because of an unclear rule that makes buyers not willing to buy their property, thus hurting the very people this rule was meant to protect. These buyers would go to Dequesta, Jupiter, North Palm Beach, or Palm Beach Gardens, where there are no such regulations. We need fair and reasonable parameters for potential buyers. I'd like to see Juno Beach continue as it is. I don't agree on people building 10,000-square-foot homes. Patty and I currently live in a 4,500-square-foot home, which we have outgrown. We have four kids. We have 12 grandchildren, and we need a place for them to come visit, not all at the same time, but when they can, a couple at a time. You know, I just would love to see Juno Beach find a way that we don't turn into a litigious society. Lawsuits are no good for anybody. They cost people money and time, which are way too precious to waste. Please consider-
Tom, are you wrapping it up? I gave you an extra 30 seconds.
Yes. Please consider bringing back some common sense and fairness to make as many people in Juno Beach happy with this process. Thank you so much for your time and what you do for our community. Tom Kelly.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott Shaw, your three minutes for public comment on item number 13 starts now.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I hope we don't cut out. Yeah, I'm Scott Shaw. I reside at 400 Apollo. Thank you for hearing me. Why do we constantly hear that harmony is subjective? Webster says that harmony is a combination of simultaneous musical notes. Then there's a second definition by Webster that says it's pleasing arrangement of parts or congruence. Juno's definition at 34-4 in the code matches nicely with Webster's second definition. Harmony in Juno is not about musical notes. It is a collection of mathematical measures. It is not subjective. Now, the word congruence, as an aside here, I learned about that in geometry class in the eighth grade. So it's, it's mathematical. Why are we learning that Juno residents are losing their property rights? In my case, I sense the looming threat of a monstrous house invading privacy and shining floodlights into my back window. Who are the Juno residents who are losing property rights, and how many? We were puzzled when we first learned of the plan for 401 Juno. Then we learned about the Pulte Project and the 15,000-foot mansion on the beach, and realized we are not dealing with a single incident such as Diana. We are facing a town government that has failed three times in the previous five months, which is the length of time we've been paying attention to this. It isn't a single incident. It is a habit of neglect of duty, which can be justification for the state to dismiss a local official. We attended a council hour and watched council members' jaws drop open when told that the plan for Diana, adjacent to our place, has nine bedrooms, six bed, nine bathrooms, six bedrooms, a study, and a club room. Diana is a great opportunity to build a beautiful upscale home that has approval of staff. On page 133 of the May 28 council meeting packet, Attorney Rubin is credited with mentioning the Burt Harris Act. The act passed 30 years ago in 1995, raises the terrible devastating threat that restricting the size of new homes could potentially result or could unfairly limit the use of property. Uh-oh, we're in trouble. Nobody that I've talked to knows of a case against Juno where Burt Harris Act is cited. But I have learned that if a town controls growth, their property values tend to be higher. That's according to a report by the Cato Institute. We're, we're left with chatter about subjective harmony, loss of property rights, and 30-year-old legislation as a means to defeat the idea of harmony. We're better off to follow John Calligan's lead, study the harmony provisions, make suggestions to improve, and table any decision until there's consensus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Sullivan, your three minutes-
You're on time, wasn't I?
Lori Sullivan, your three minutes for public comments starts now for item number 13.
Thanks so much, and I really want to echo what Jim Errett, Chelsea, Scott has said, and some of what Tom had said. And I'm really here to urge town council to protect aesthetic zoning as a legitimate, effective, and legally defensible way to protect the property values in Juno Beach. Now, I've lived in historic and seaside communities where the cycle of unchecked bulk and scale have really taken hold, and it becomes really, really hard to stop. And I kind of listened to what Chelsea had said and how she speculated towards how this might unfold into the future. And I can tell you that I've seen it, and I want to share, share with you what it looks like. What it looks like, looked like in Avalon, New Jersey, and other once-quaint communities. Once the oversized homes start to replace modest ones, it really starts a new market precedent. And suddenly, the home, not the land, not the home, but the land is what holds the value. And the modest homes no longer really pencil out, and so they become torn down for profit. And it's really the families who can't afford to maintain the homes anymore. And so at least in Avalon, what they started to do was to rent. And then, once that started to happen, developers followed. And the, and the developers started to build even bigger, bigger and bulkier homes. Six bedrooms, big garages, minimal yards. These are designed for renters, not for families, the way that some of my neighbors have described it. And let me tell you what it has looked like physically over time. More bedrooms means more cars. And so with the aesthetic principle of form follows function, what happens is the, the first floor becomes a garage to hide all those cars. And the streets have become just a wall of rolled-up garage doors instead of front porches and front doors. And so that traditional relationship that you tend to have in a neighborhood between the home and the street, a porch, a front door, all of that tends to vanish, vanish. And it really doesn't stop then at the commercial areas, otherwise, or at the residential areas. It really then cascades into the commercial areas. And what we've seen in our neighborhoods up here in New Jersey, where I am today, is the local shops have all gotten priced out, and all the national chains have moved in. And it's not because the residents want them. It's because the property values have gone up. And they're the only ones who can afford it. And I've seen it. I've seen when the bulk take holds and this cascading effect starts to happen, first on the neighborhoods, individual families, and then in the commercial areas. It's really hard to pull it back. And then it becomes what the last speaker just said. It becomes a litigious environment where we're protecting the rights, not of neighbors, but of developers and of, of, of the economic value, not the residential value of our neighborhoods. So I'm urging you to let the town and the planning and zoning committees consider things like harmony and regulations, architectural regulations. These are human beings that are there to apply these principles of harmony and, and other aesthetic zoning-
Can you try to wrap it up for me?
Of course. You know, and, and I really think that by working with professionals, architects, planners, and legal experts that can help us get definitions around it, where we're not just surmising what those mean, and work with people who want to protect their home values and their families, and let, let that be applied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Max Forsey, Frazier? Sorry.
My bad hand running, not your fault. Hi, my name's Max Fraser. My family originally moved to Juno Beach in 1984. So I've been here for 41 years. Currently live at 500 South Lyra Circle. I loved growing up here. I love the beach. It was an amazing place to grow up. I currently live down the street of 500 and raising my two kids here, hoping to have as good a time with them as my parents had with me. And it's sad to see what's kind of changed in the last couple of years here in Juno Beach. If anyone wants to take a turn down South Lyra Circle and look at the ginormous white concrete block that looks more like a nightclub in South Beach with two 35-foot LED strip lights going down the front of the building, I do not think that that's anything anyone here would want to move in next to. Unfortunately for me, it was built after I moved into the home where I would like to spend the rest of my time, hopefully the next 40 years here, raising my kids in Juno Beach. I'm hoping that we can prevent other people and other families who want to move here or who live here already to have to live next to an eyesore like I will have to live through for the next 20, 30, 40 years. There's not a single resident that I've spoken to on South Lyra Circle or North Lyra Circle that is happy with this abomination, I will call it. It's, it's a hideous building that we now have to look at every day and live next to every day of our lives here. And that's just all I want to say. I hope we can bring some harmony and use some common sense going forward in the future. And thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Nina Hirsch, 471 Sunset Way. And I too have lived here off and on since the 70s. Remember, before the castle was here. So I kind of enjoy that. Code 780 has served to divide a once-collegial town. On that alone, it should be discussed forthwith or repealed. But I'll give you a better reason. Keeping it will bankrupt the town. Let me just say that again. The $6 to $7 million we have will be gone by a class-action lawsuit or multiple lawsuits that I've heard, just walking around the town. lawsuits that I've heard just walking around the town. Len, you know what the cost of defending that, outside counsel, attorneys, paralegal secretaries, and length of time. They want the time, they want the money, and they will come because people can do it, and they are annoyed. And this is breaking up this town. With the class-action lawsuit or with multiple individual lawsuits, no new police cars, no new gazebo, no improved town center, no sidewalks, no Pelican Lake improvements. And if we get hit by a hurricane, that money is gone, and we need to go to a bank to finance it. And for those of you in condos who think that this doesn't concern you, your taxes will go up, you'll pay your fair share. All of this is a very real possibility because this is a litigious issue, and people are ready to fight it. So on that alone, it needs to be discussed because it affects all of our wallets and this little quaint town that we all love. Is it worth it? Is it worth it on any rea... Why did you decide that seven eighty was necessary? Councilwoman Davis, your slide presentation showed the castle house, which you described as an eyesore. Nonetheless, it did not prevent nor deter you in red from purchasing your home on that street. Indeed, you passed it to come here tonight. It did not prevent four ninety-one Sunset Way from selling last night at a possible record of eleven hundred dollars a square foot. That's two-point-three million dollars, which is a huge amount of money for a twenty-one-hundred square foot house that had no additions to it. This is what we're living with, and this is what we're dealing with. Councilmember Davis, you cited privacy as a concern, as did Mr. Shaw. And privacy is a concern and should be a concern. But for seven eighty, your second-floor windows look right into your neighbor's pool, thus depriving them of the privacy of which you preach. So we've determined the castle house in all its glory doesn't deter buyers such as yourself. You have added floors to your nineteen-sixties home, so forty-five percent of your point-two-three acres is covered by building, but you propose to limit that to anybody else. My concern here is a code that some don't believe in for themselves. So is it to enrich you, fellow Juno residents? You should ask the same. Is seven eighty to enrich certain people? And yes, the proposed ban for fill will stop all building, including pools, sidewalks, gazebos, et cetera. That's Building Construction one oh one.
Can you wrap it up, Nina?
These proposals appear to be for thee, but not me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael Karp.
I don't know where they are in the...
Yeah, go to the next one then. It's fine.
I believe the next one, it's four-two-one North Juno Lane. I can't read, unfortunately, the name. Charles Collins, yes.
Good evening, everybody. Charles Collins, I own two properties, four-twenty-one North Juno Lane and four-eleven Jupiter Lane. I'm new to these proceedings. I'll try to find some points of difference than what has been discussed, but I agree with many of the viewpoints here. I'm planning on rebuilding, knocking down my house at four-twenty-one North Juno Lane. I met with my architects and Stephen Meyer not too long ago, just to go over kind of allocation of land and what have you. Stephen explained the architectural review. I've since read the ordinance seven eighty. I'm happy to say, try to remember my face, I'm planning on building a very responsible house, okay? Low profile, lot of balconies. I've owned these two properties for fifteen years. I love Juno Beach, so I hope that at some point in time I can be the model for what we want to do. How we get there, I don't know. And I applaud everything you're trying to do, and it's a very complex issue, clearly. The only point, and I didn't want to reiterate what other people talked about, but I've heard that more recently there was a workshop, I didn't know, I mean, I just chose not to attend it, where some of more detail is being fleshed out. And I heard that there's an idea being floated whereby any rebuild can only be the size of the original footprint of the house that it is replacing. Okay, so my house at four-twenty-one was built in nineteen fifty-two. It's two bedrooms, one bathroom, eleven hundred square feet. I can't build anything that is in harmony, in keeping with what Juno represents on that footprint, just a little shotgun house, gable roof, nothing to it, really. So I really hope that you don't adopt that. And again, I don't know what's going to be discussed later during the agenda when, after these comments, but that and echoing the other woman's comments, I mean, that will very much lead to a class-action lawsuit. So I don't even know if it's being contemplated, so I don't want to get ahead of myself. I only hope that that is not being contemplated. So I look forward to going through the process. I look forward to working with everyone. I think what I'm going to be doing is very responsible, and I wish you all the best for finding a workable solution for all of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marsha Wolf.
I apologize for the mask, but I am immune compromised, and I'm a little bit concerned that you're letting people rearrange. I think that's kind of odd to say. My name is Meg Deering. My family and I have lived here since nineteen eighty-nine, first on Zenith Lane and now on Apollo. I've carefully read the correspondence that the board has sent out on the harmony issue, and I really appreciate the time you all put in to try to persuade the town and each other to your point of view. There are two recurring points that I've read and heard that I think we all agree upon. Number one is we want to keep Juno Beach a beautiful, enticing seaside community. Number two is we must honor property owners' rights. On point one, the emphasis has been on architectural harmony. I think that really is not the issue of concern or what the arguments are about. It is about housing size. Large homes will not keep Juno Beach an enticing place to live. The larger you allow the homes to be, the greater chance that we are not dealing with a new neighbor who actually wants to live in the town. Instead, we're enticing someone only interested in speculating, a developer, an eventual absentee owner, or short-term renters who do not know us or the charm of our town. They are thinking northeast, and I'm from the northeast, so I can say this, or west-coast thoughts of bigger is always better, and that's not the case. These expensive homes will change our neighborhood, it will become a ghost town or party central, as we have already seen the four rental properties behind my street and one directly behind my property. Worse, it will guarantee that a family or retiree who is not extremely wealthy will not be a part of our community. One of my husbands and my goals has been that our own children would be able to inherit our home. However, if you continue to allow mega mansions that take up every square inch of a plot of land and with no buffer or true greenery, not only will the taxes outprice what my sons can pay, but it will also be a neighborhood that they do not care to live in. So the first decision that the citizens of Juno Beach and you as our representatives must make is whether this will become a town of the absentee speculating elite or not. I hope you will decide against that by keeping the current harmony, well, I shouldn't say it that way, by looking at the sizing. The second issue you have raised is property rights. Should a new property owner have the right to build whatever they want on the property? But that question misses that as an existing property owner, I need you to protect my rights as well. I would hope a new neighbor and the council would respect my right to not have an eyesore looming over my home, built up to within a few feet of my property line. I would hope a new neighbor and the council would respect my right to not have noise blaring out over my property at all hours and floodlights coming into my living room. I would also hope that a new neighbor and the council would respect my right to sit in my backyard and not be splashed by someone on the other side of the property line because a pool is so close that if my neighbor or their renters jump in, I get wet. To me, keeping Juno Beach, Juno Beach means a building code that entices neighbors who want to live in Juno Beach not speculate on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Basso. That's up to the town council.
Does she have a slide?
I think it's...
Thank you. Okay. Is it all right with council to put it up on the slide? Any objections?
Then we'd have to give everyone permission to do a presentation.
Oh, I don't, she still gets three minutes. Is that a no? I need a consensus, deeply.
I think she could read this.
Okay. All right.
It's simple enough to explain.
Yep.
Ann Basso, seven sixty-five Hibiscus Avenue. As I think most of y'all know, I am a real estate appraiser. And I met with Frank. We used a sample. We took John Stelludo's house, as a matter of fact, at four oh one Sunset. And we looked at the current underlying zoning, the original underlying zoning of the house, and what could be done with the house if it was torn down. All real estate begins with the land, the value of the land. Currently, he could build a fifty-six-hundred, I mean, under the existing, the original zoning, he could build a fifty-six-hundred-square-foot house, which they're selling right now for approximately a thousand dollars a square foot of living area. That would give him a value of five-point-six million dollars on that house. Under the ordinance seven eighty, his building footprint would be reduced to forty-nine-hundred square feet, showing a loss of seven hundred thousand. If he, y'all use the average of three homes, it would be, I mean, of his surrounding homes of three hundred feet, he would be reduced to twenty-nine-hundred square feet, which would be a loss, a potential loss of two-point-seven million dollars. These numbers speak for themselves. This ordinance is inhibiting property values and property rights. We've had zoning codes for many, many years. Harmony has been in the codes for years. There are ways to protect both the property owner and their neighbors without taking away property rights and thus value. Whether you're going to sell your house or live in it forever, I mean, sell it right now or plan to leave it to your children, the value is going to go up because the value's in the land, as long as people have the right to build under these zoning codes that have worked well for this town for about fifty or sixty years. Changing those codes is a definite infringement on values. And I agree with Nina, people in the condominiums, if y'all don't think that condominiums are going to be affected by this, I believe you're wrong. Money begots money. When these newer, bigger houses are built in town, it also, it doesn't necessarily mean investors are coming in. A lot of people are moving to Juno Beach with families, but they don't want to live in eighteen-hundred square feet with two-story, I mean, with low ceilings. It's called functional obsolescence. Anyway, I think my three minutes are up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Basso.
John Stelludo, four zero one Sunset Way, Juno Beach. Thank you for allowing me. So I'd like to thank the staff for the truck, food truck thing the other night. I know it wasn't so successful, but they were doing a lot of work, and I saw them out here dumping the water off the chairs and running around, so thanks to them. Anyhow, get on. I grew up in Connecticut. I was born in Florida, and when I sold my house in Connecticut, we came to Florida, and I want to be on the East Coast here. And I looked from way down Delray and up to the Space Coast, up and down, and all little beach towns. And I loved Juno Beach because of the ridge. I didn't know about the town or what was going on, but I liked the ridge, the height above sea level, you know, I'm like seventeen, maybe twenty feet above there. And then for the fact that I could have a view of the ocean, that was the whole point. I mean, I'd love to be oceanfront, but I can't afford that. So in my mind, I would walk to the beach, have a view, and that afforded me that. We didn't have jobs when we moved here. I had fifty thousand burning a hole in my pocket, and I put it down on the house, and we both had full-time jobs within the year. So who buys a house that doesn't even have a job? But anyhow, I wanted to live here, and the fact that I could see the ocean, look over the castle. I had a ladder on the side of my house for thirty-five years till my wife made me take it down, won't allow me to go on the roof anymore. But I used to go up on the roof all the time. I could look at the, I could just barely see the ocean. But if I had a second level, I would have no problem. I had beautiful views of the lake. Now that when the castle got built, it took part of my view of the lake, that's fine. My other neighbor had big plants. No one's guaranteed a view. But I knew that if something happened and I had to sell my house, it would go with those same plans. Our street's about ten thousand square foot each lot. We were, could have two stories and a cupola up there, and now I don't know what I can have. I've been told, you heard Ann use my house as an example, it's ridiculous, okay? Juno Beach hasn't done anything for me. I've been fighting for sidewalks, fighting for crosswalks. I fought them thirty years on, stop cutting the native trees and stop breaking up the sidewalks. They don't do anything for me. Now they're taking my view away, and I feel that they're taking money out of my pocket because they're squishing down my size I can build. And if I can't, if I can't have that dream, then maybe the next person that comes to Juno Beach can have that dream. These houses, these lots, were not supposed to be little, single-family homes. They weren't supposed to be a little cute community. They were plotted in nineteen fifty-three for two stories and a cupola, and that's all I want back. I want my original rights back. I don't want anything secondary. Please repeal seven eighty. Please repeal seven eighty. Please repeal seven eighty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Soarsby.
Good evening, council members and fellow residents. My name is Larry Soarsby, four nine five Zephyr Way, and I'm here as a concerned homeowner and member of the Juno Beach Property Rights Association. For over thirty years, our town successfully maintained the character of Juno Beach through responsible setback and height restrictions for single-family homes. These regulations guided by our harmony codes, which have been in place that same amount of time, were based on principles of fairness, clarity, and simplicity, protecting homeowners and preserving our community's unique charm. However, that balance was disrupted with the passage of ordinance seven eighty in twenty twenty-four. This ordinance unfairly restricts property rights, threatens home values, and exposes a town to costly legal challenges. It removes homeowners' ability to make reasonable property improvements under clear guidelines, instead subjecting decisions to the inconsistent interpretations of town staff and planning the zoning boards. In essence, ordinance seven eighty is neither fair, simple, nor consistently applied. Property rights are fundamental to American freedom and financial security. When local governments overreach, they don't just hinder home improvements, they jeopardize the home equity people have built over decades. This is particularly detrimental for residents whose largest single asset is their home. Many of our Juno Beach residents rely on their home's value for the next phase of retirement, including increased medical expenses and/or the cost of an assisted living facility. Declining property values can lead to significant financial hardship or reduce the inheritance they can leave their families. Council members, why adopt a policy that limits homeowners' rights, invites costly lawsuits, and reduces home values for everyone? The solution is clear. We must repeal ordinance seven eighty and reinstate our proven harmony codes, which successfully served Juno Beach for decades. Furthermore, the town council should not repeal seven eighty only to introduce new codes that limit the size of single-family homes. Doing so would leave us in the exact same place, diminishing property rights and reducing property values. Let's return to zoning policies that are clear, consistent, and respectful of homeowners' rights. Let's protect both the character of Juno Beach and the value of our single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Karp.
Madam Clerk, these are petitions. I am Michael Karp. I live at four seven one Sunset Way. I am here this evening to talk about the Juno Beach Property Rights Association polling and petition results, seeking to rescind the harmony provisions, i.e. ordinance seven eighty. Unlike other surveys that were presented to council anonymously, or emails that were sent out without identifying the individuals behind the sender, we have a hundred and seventy-three unique and verifiable signatures petitioning the council to rescind ordinance seven eighty. These signatures include two former town mayors, two former town council members, at least one of which was on the council when the original harmony provisions were passed over twenty years ago. Why are these numbers important? First, in a very short period of time, we obtained these signatures without a full-court press on the entire we obtained these signatures without a full court press on the entire electorate. We have not gone to any of the condos, Unalago, Captain's Key, or Waterford. Secondly, you've heard Ms. Bosso's analysis of the damages to one particular home in the millions. Multiply that by 173 and you've got damages that will bankrupt this town. Mr. Calligan, I address this to you. The lawsuits are coming. That's a fact. They're going to take the form of actions for both injunctive relief and for Burt Harris-type damages with the intent on certifying a class on a class action lawsuit. You're supposed to be the steward of our tax dollars, subjecting the town to potential damages that could be literally in the hundreds of millions. Uh, in my opinion, is reckless. Mr. Ruben, at the workshop, you indicated that you could argue both sides of a Burt Harris-type action. That's commendable, but even an ax murderer is entitled to strong advocacy and a defense. You are doing this town a disservice by not telling the council which side of the issue you would prefer to litigate and win. Counsel, I urge you to rescind ordinance 780.
Marshall Wolf?
Marshall Wolf, 410 Sunrise Way. I feel super sensitive about both sides of this issue. However, I do feel that a lot of the extreme upset I hear coming from Apollo is unfounded. There's a lot of inflammatory rhetoric going around that just isn't so. I have all the signatures for Sunrise Way, my street, or 90%. And I live next to a really big, beautiful home on the corner of Ocean Drive. We love that house. We love our neighbors. All of our property values went up when that house was built. It was built thoughtfully so that there are pools on the other side of my pool. I, there's no infringement of my privacy whatsoever. Absolutely terrible things were built during the last administration. I think that part of what's happening now is this is a backlash against that. And I know predominantly it seems to be Apollo, which is mostly 70s houses. But what a lot of the people don't realize is that you got a stack this thick, all of you, of closing papers. And in those closing papers, it told you what you were buying. Otherwise, you'd be buying a pig in a poke. If somebody was able to come in and just change what you bought, which is the zoning, the setback in the heights, on a whim, as Diana's pushing, Diana, who's maxed her property out and who has a tower, she's at 4,500. And I maintain that the primary reason that Diana Davis is doing this is she's got a third-story nude sunbathing tower. And all the work that she's doing is an effort to keep her neighbors lower than that. It would create an inequality in the market. Her house at 4,800 square feet would be worth twice what mine is because I wouldn't be allowed to bill to my setbacks and my zoning. And that's what I think people don't realize. There's been one new bill per year for the past 10 years. There are no developers here. We only have two lots left in town. And everybody is hysterical over things that were built during the last group that shouldn't have been passed, many of them. I, I agree with you. But if 780 were passed, my property would go down from about $2,400,000 to about $1 million. It's not fair. It's not right. 780 has to be defeated. We have harmony, as mentioned in our codes, written by John Callahan in 1992. That's enough. Thank you. Please repeal 780.
Thank you. Cynthia Frazier?
Good evening, council. Cynthia Frazier, 1705 Floral Drive in Juno Beach. I am here to urge you to repeal ordinance 780. This ordinance enacted in 2024 reduces the previously allowable square footage for single-family homes, thus lowering property values, restricting homeowners' rights, and exposing the town to unnecessary legal challenges. During the workshop on May 2, Jim Ferguson put it eloquently when he talked about Adam Smith's basic principles on how to make a good law, how to make a good regulation. And he said it comes down to three core principles. Number one, is it fair? Does everybody think it's fair? Does it apply to everyone the same way? Number two, simplicity. Is the law easy to understand? And is it easy for the government to enforce? And three, certainty. Is the law that is applied this year going to be the same next year? Or if I'm dealing with a different member of government, are they going to apply it differently? The 300-foot rule in ordinance 780 fails all three principles. I do not believe ordinance 780 is fair, simple, or certain. In addition, I am in support of the Juno Beach Property Rights Association. I obtained signatures in my neighborhood on a petition to repeal this ordinance. The Juno Beach Property Rights Association is committed to transparency, integrity, and constructive civic engagement. They operate with full transparency in their actions and communications and value open dialogue with all stakeholders. I believe the mission is focused solely on advocating for the property rights of Juno Beach residents and not to engage or endorse any form of disparagement towards member of the council or any public officials. I believe that respectful, fact-based discussions are essential for fostering a strong and united community. Thank you.
Thank you. Aldo Rivera?
Dear Mayor, Council Staff, and Residents, you know what we need? We need a workshop. Wait, oh wait, we had one. We had one. Some acknowledged that we called it a workshop, but the public, like a council meeting, was limited to initial comments from a few residents and no engagement from citizens after hearing from the council, PZ, PNC, and the staff. This has led to newsletters, emails by named and unnamed individuals seeking to grant, gather favor for their particular point of view. The discussion centers around the word harmony in the Architectural Review Guidelines of Ordinance 780. This is more than a policy. It boils down to a matter of semantics and interpretation. The word harmony means different things to different people. And how we define and apply it shapes both the property rights and the future of our town's appearance. Some argue that harmony is too subjective, difficult to define, easy to misapply, and therefore problematic. Florida has evolving legal standards, which emphasize clarity, consistency, and historical precedent. From that view, decisions based on undefined aesthetics can seem arbitrary and open to the door to legal disputes or homeowner frustration. Others see harmony as essential, a word that captures the character and charm of our town. It reflects how homes relate to each other and to the streetscape, how architectural elements work together, and how we preserve the small-town atmosphere we all value. Removing the word could weaken our ability to maintain this visual identity. To eliminate it could be seen as an outright rejection of the concept by our town. In truth, both sides are right in some ways. We really, we're really facing a language and planning challenge. How to respect the individual property rights while guiding the kind of development that keeps our town cohesive and appealing? And while we'd all like a solution that's certain for all time, that's really realistic. In just the past few years, we've seen dramatic changes in home design and scale. What was once harmonious has shifted, reflecting broader trends and evolving preferences. That's why we should consider bringing modern tools into the process. One approach would be to create a template envelope for each existing property, defining its developmental limits in terms of volume. I only need a few extra seconds.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Massing scale and based on both the building code and architectural review criteria. This is on the table. A plan for analyzing floor area ratio, volume, and massing for single-family dwellings. Someone who has the tools to create clear visual parameters for each lot, using objective data and the latest technology. Chenmoor comes to mind. This could be funded either directly or through the reallocation of funds for existing services already paid for.
Aldo, can you wrap it up?
I'm going to wrap it up.
Thank you.
Establishing parameters through an independent third party would reduce subjectivity, help preserve aesthetic values, and create a consistent, transparent standard for all applicants. In short, we don't need to abandon harmony. We need to clarify it, define it, support it with modern tools and historical context. That way, we both protect the rights of the individual and also the town's visual identity.
Can you wrap it up, Aldo?
Done.
All right.
Done. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Dunn?
Brett Dunn, 440 Sunset Way. You might remember that we, I guess it's been a couple of years the, the house is built on US 1. A developer proposed and had a design to put plastic grass on the front of the house. And so talking about how crazy it can be. And, and so I am for the architectural review. I'd like to see it if, if we need to tweak it a little bit, make it easier for the PNC board to use. Of course, we want to do that. I do not think we should repeal the architectural review done by the PNC board. The review adds a lot of value to the town. I also think we should retain the ability to, to review the size of buildings, of the new buildings. I hope that we can agree that harmony appearance review criteria should be clear and easier to understand. And, and right now, it is not easier to understand by some of the PNC members. There have been several proposals to clarify the harmony. And so there's an opportunity. And the opportunity is to improve on it, not to get rid of it. We can, why can't we fix it rather than just say, we don't want it? Let's look for a way to fix it. And, and on a more personal note, I wanted to, I've been accused of, because we, some of you know, we built a second story on our house. And we've been accused that we want that and we don't want anybody else. Well, I want to let you know that that's not true. It is false. And that I think everybody in the entire ridge, south to north, should be able to build a second story in their house. And, and if that's not the case with the harmony codes that have been put in place in the last two years, then we should fix that. We shouldn't get rid of them. Everybody should at least, at minimum, be able to have that second story and have that dream of having a larger house. What we're talking about here is the extremes. We're not talking about building a bigger house. I agree that the houses need to, the older houses, the 50s and 60s, some of them are teardowns. And, and I'm not arguing with anybody that would say that. I, I agree on that. What we're saying is look at the ones that are extreme. And that's what this harmony code brings to us. And if it's not right, let's fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I received a comment card from Charlotte Parker, just marked opposed. Um, I received two comments through the town's web forum from Cindy Wolf, 440 Starlight Lane, and Laura Niedernhofer, 471 Apollo Drive. That will be included in the record. Also, just wanted to ask council if they wish to include those emails that council received over the past couple of days in reference to the harmony and keeping the codes.
Yes.
Yes.
To the record. I have two, yes.
I think all of them should be included in the record, including the ones that were done today.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. We're going to include those in the record. Can you come up, Charlotte? I know you wanted, you had a card, so go ahead and come up.
Actually, I had three cards. I was asked to come here to represent Roland Ginkowski and Sharon Ginkowski, the owners of three properties, 441 North Juno Lane, 351 Zenith, and 400 Sunset. They were unable to come, so they asked that I go ahead and express that they oppose for all three. So not just one vote.
The opposition is for removing the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. So they, they, they want to remove the ordinance?
They do.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure that you just did not say that I just had one. I was, I'm representing an, an owner that owns three properties.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Abbott, I live in Live Circle up here on the hill by Mac. What the town has is what I call a two-headed snake problem. And it's called progress. And you can have progress with control or progress without control. And if you have progress without control, you have chaos, as you all know. And this is happening in all towns all over the countryside. And it's called the Great White House. It was an article in Wall Street Journal, basically about suburban neighborhoods were being bought up. The houses were bought up and the big houses up above so they could look down on their neighbors. So that's the problem with the town, and I hope they can solve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? All the comments I received for this item.
Okay. Frank, it's your turn.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This discussion is a continuation of our workshop on the Appearance Review Criteria, more specifically, Architecture and Harmony. There we go. Thank you. At the end of the workshop, council provided direction to staff on numerous items. These included the following. To discontinue the review and enforcement of architectural review for single-family homes. This was based on the discussion with the town attorney and his findings regarding the statute preemption of building design element reviews. At the workshop, council directed staff to continue with the status quo for the review of harmony for single-family homes. Staff continues to do so, and we have two additional applications at the time. Lastly, to conduct an analysis of the proposed language submitted by Vice Mayor Calligan and for staff to return with additional options, tools, to help clarify the code. Staff has already started working on the consensus received by town council. At the next Planning and zoning board meeting, the board will be reviewing a proposed co-text amendment that will remove the architectural review, building design element criteria as defined by the state for single-family and two-family dwellings. Please note that after the Planning and zoning board, this will come to town council for two readings with their recommendation. In addition, please note that the architectural styles for the projects, for projects other than single and two-family will continue to apply. These would be the cases for single-family homes within a planned unit development, such as the project at the 700s or projects such as Coretta and Polte. So that will continue to, we will continue to enforce architectural styles on those type of projects. The review process has remained status quo as directed. Town staff is still taking applications for appearance review and will continue to use staff's methodology until directed otherwise. That methodology being the one that we explained at the workshop. And staff completed the review of the proposed language as submitted by, at the workshop, and also benchmarked other municipalities. And prior to proposing other controls, we verified with the town attorney in, in ways so that we could avoid any unwanted consequences. As part of staff's analysis for both the review of the Vice Mayor Calligan's proposal and staff's own analysis of proposed tools or controls, town staff consulted with the town attorney prior to moving forward. The town attorney indicated that adding metrics that result The town attorney indicated that adding metrics that result in restricting the size of new homes so that a property owner is limited to less square footage than existing homes in the immediate vicinity could potentially result in a Burt Harris Act claim, as this regulation could unfairly or unreasonably limit the existing use of the property to an extent that the property owner is unable to attain his or her reasonable invested back expectation. With this in mind, and based on the comments provided by the town attorney, staff provides the following conclusion for the proposed language of plus or minus a percentage of the average-sized home within the study area. Again, this was the proposal that we received at the workshop, and this is attachment number one. Staff concluded that most of the criteria are not quantifiable, as these terms, landscape, site planning, materials, et cetera, are often used as visual aesthetic elements, which leads them to be qualitative in nature. For the quantifiable terms such as mass and bulk, staff applied the proposed methodology of plus or minus a percentage. In this case, we use 10%, 15%, and 50%. Plus the average or minus the average of the existing, of the homes within the study area. Staff concluded that by using this methodology, certain properties could not build to the square footage of the largest house within the study area. This approach would contradict the guidance provided by the town attorney, and thus, is not recommended by staff. Staff benchmarked other municipalities to find out what other controls have been implemented to regulate supersized houses. These options are listed in the memorandum and in the screen in front of you. Please note that in one way or another, the town regulates seven of these options already, such as building height, floor area ratio, bulk and mass, setbacks, lot coverage, parking, landscape open space. Based on the town attorney's comments, staff recommends the following tools for council to review and consider. An additional five-foot setback to the second story and above to be added to the minimum setback criteria for the first floor. This would apply to all sides, front yard, I'm sorry, front, side, and rear. So if your side setback is 10 feet, that would still be the case for the first floor. The side setback for the second floor will now be 15 feet. These type of controls will reduce the maximum square footage that can be built on the second floor, and will allow for the design professional to incorporate breaks, step backs in the facade of the wall, eliminating a blank/solid wall, and further enhance the architectural component of the home. Incorporating a second-story floor area limit, the floor area, the floor area, what staff would propose is that the floor area of the second story for the single-family home shall not exceed 75% of the floor area of the first story. This approach will create a new limit to the total square feet that a home may have. Please note that both the setback and the second-floor area limit have been recently incorporated in the Village of North Palm Beach. The possibility of increasing the landscape open space is another option. Currently, the town's consultant, CMA, Chen Moore Associates, is reviewing the town's code and will provide recommendations to town council after they complete their benchmarkings and their due diligence, which includes public meetings. Lastly, staff recommends creating a design pattern or a pattern book to highlight the town's desired architectural style. The town cannot enforce architectural styles for single-family homes, but it can be used as a recommendation guide. The book can be used, and it is, and it would be enforceable for other projects bigger than two-family homes. So, I apologize for the drawing in front of you. I did do the hand drawing. So for us, for all of us to be clear, I want to show you what is currently permissible under base zoning for a 10,000-square-foot lot in the RS1 zoning district, pretty much the homes behind us. Again, this is a 10,000-square-foot lot, so 100 by 100. In this district, the setbacks are 25 feet for the front, 10 for the side, and rear. The blue square is the buildable area, meaning that this is where you can place your building. Your building or structure size will depend on other criteria such as lot coverage, building height, parking, and landscape open space percentage. The coverage, the lot coverage in this zoning district is 35%, which equals to 3,500 square feet, as shown in the red box. As shown, the lot coverage is smaller and fits within the building area, buildable area. And as long as the other criteria are met, this is the footprint for the first floor. Again, the red box, 3,500 square feet. We now know that the setbacks for the first floor and the maximum footprint, 3,500 square feet. Here, we see a setback requirement and the floor area limit for the second floor, and how it will impact a proposed structure and its maximum square footage. The blue box is the second-story setback. We simply added an additional five feet to each side, except for the rear, as the rear setback was not maxed out and in fact, has additional flexibilities to be shifted back. But remember, the structure cannot be bigger than the 35% lot coverage, even though our setbacks are not maxed out. We calculated that the second-floor area will be, if we applied the setback, of five feet, it will be approximately 2,712.5 square feet. This is a difference of negative 787.5 square feet from the currently base zoning allowance of 3,500 square feet. The green box, which is almost identical to the blue box, illustrates the floor area limit for the second floor. 75% of 3,500 square feet, which is the first floor, first-floor footprint, is 2,625 square feet, which is slightly less than the maximum square footage with the setbacks. So this is an additional reduction of 87.5 square feet. Just to recap, under base zoning, the maximum square footage structure could be built up to 7,000 square feet, and this is on their air garage, you know, this is the box, you know, completely maxed out, 7,000 square feet. With the proposed additions of the second-story setback and the floor area limit for the second floor, the maximum area is approximately 6,125 square feet, which gives you an approximate reduction of 875 square feet from the original 7,000. If council is to proceed with staff's recommendation, the following steps would follow in order to move forward in the process. These were labeled as proposed council direction in the memorandum. We would first amend the code to remove architectural review, building design elements as defined by the state for single and two-family dwellings. We would establish a zoning in progress, which would allow staff with ample time to amend the code while halting the review appearance for single-family homes. Amend the code to remove Appearance Review from single-family homes as indicated in Section 34-116. And Harmony, please note that Harmony will continue to apply to projects for two-family and larger. We would amend the code to revert the review of and approval denial of single-family homes from the Planning and Zoning Board to staff. We would also amend the code to remove the comparison of Harmony language that considers the preponderance of structures to comparison, to comparison of building or structures within the same contiguous zoning district. And finally, amend the code to implement the additional regulations, which include A and B, possibly C, depending on what the outcome is from the research from CMA, to each zoning district with the single-family detached dwelling as a use. Staff recommends for the town council to incorporate the steps mentioned in the proposed council direction section of the memorandum. And we want you to note that if there is no resolution on how to move forward, staff will continue to use the current methodology that we've been using for the review of Harmony. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Frank before we start discussions, just on his presentation? I'd like you to go back, if you don't mind, Frank, to the design, where you did the setback, or step back, I guess. So did you do, so the first one, just so everyone understands it, the blue is the original?
No, the red is what would be allowed on their base zoning right now.
Okay.
With the setbacks. And if I just go back one more. This blue right here is the buildable area.
Are you saying setback to setback? That's what you mean, when you're saying building site area regulations? Is that correct, or?
That's base zoning. So that's setback.
Setback.
It's also lot coverage.
Lot coverage. We would also have to look at landscape open space in there. Parking, because, you know, you're going to get a driveway, things like that, yes. So under base zoning, if all of those fit in there, and you know, you have to get creative, where are you going to put the driveway? Where are you going to get your 25% minimum landscape open space? Usually the side or backyards. That would give you approximately 3,500 square feet for the footprint.
So the second, the first one in the blue, the setbacks for the second, just explain that again, the difference between the blue and the green, and you said there's a setback and FAL.
So now, if we look at the image, on the front, we have a 25-foot setback. On the sides, we have a 10-foot setback and a 10-foot setback. This is all the red. I did 31.25 on the rear, because I needed that square to be 3,500 square feet. If we apply the five-foot setback, the blue line would be now, would now be the footprint for the second story. You can still do the red on the first story, the blue is your second story. And of course, your design professional, they can shift it, they can guide it. But at minimum, you have to give me an additional five feet for the side and for the front. So that 25 goes to 30, that 10 goes to 15. And in this case, the 31.25 stays at 31.25, because they already gave me more than 10 feet, or more than 15.
Why don't you just give me the bottom number on all of this? So the setback is gonna take away how many square feet on that particular house? 875, or was that the FAL?
That's the total of it. It's very close to that.
That's fine, but that's about 875 square feet you lose, with the FAL or the setback?
Well, with the setback. I'll just do this, 3,500 minus 27, 1250, 27, 12.5, 787.5.
So the other one was 7,000 minus 6125, which was 875? And that would be the FAL?
So with the FAL, now we're doing 75, you can have 75% on the second story from what the first story is. So that would give you 2,625 square feet. The difference between the 2712 and the 2625 is what we have there on the, on the green, which would be the 815, I believe. Nope, we don't have it there. Yep.
Sorry, we're all just seeing this for the first time. That's why we have so many questions?
87.
7,000, 875.
Okay, so what that means is, if you go by the $1,000 a square foot, that's going to lower the value for a setback or a FAL by either 787,000 to 875,000, if you base it on the square footage. I just wanted to make sure I had the square footage right. Did anybody have any questions for Frank before we go to discussion?
Yes, I have a question for Frank. So, we had the workshop to talk about architectural review and to talk about Harmony. Harmony seems to have the most discussion with the community and more conversation. I, at the workshop, I had a non-working microphone, and evidently Lynn Rubin did too. But if, if adding the one, okay, so, and at the workshop, there was a workshop agreement, which isn't binding, to get rid of architectural review, but to keep our Harmony reviews. So, and everyone agreed, the people who want maximum square footage and the people that want to keep the charm, keep Juno Beach, Juno Beach charming community. So everybody there wanted those metrics to be quantifiable for the Harmony mass, size, bulk, scale, proportion, you know, that, everybody wanted quantifiable metrics. So then, that was the direction to staff. And so now, in this memo, what I read is according to Lynn Rubin, that there's been a determination that because of potential Harris claim, that we're not able to do the Harmony incremental growth, that, that anything that's less than the largest max square footage, that side, of that group of people, anything that's less than the max square footage, then it's potential Burt Harris, so we can't do it. So I was just really confused by this memo, and wondered if we could have Lynn Rubin come back to us. And I apologize if you said this at the workshop, since you were muted at the workshop. But to do a memo on the Harris claims and what the potential liabilities are, and how you define those risks, because if we're gonna base a decision on a legal interpretation, I want to see the legal interpretation. I want to see the case laws that cited. Burt Harris is, I think one of the speakers had said that Burt Harris has been around since 1995. I'm not aware that the town has had any Burt Harris claims. I mean, we've had a lot of the writ of certiorari claims, and those writ of certiorari claims. So that was, and that's a clarification. Anyway, the writ of certiorari claims, no damages, no penalties, no prevailing party attorney's fees. You go to the courthouse and you have to defend your board's decision on, say, architectural review or mass size scale. But it doesn't contain all of those penalties. And I did get confirmation that we do have, that we do have insurance on these type of risks. So, I guess, I was, I was set back by the memo, because it was as if the policy that you're asking the council to set had already been decided, and there was no decisions for us to make. So we weren't going to, we weren't going to quantify these Harmony criteria, which was the direction. We were gonna look at these four other criteria. So, I mean, I do think it's a good idea to keep looking at measurable quantities, and that was kind of the direction from the workshop. But I don't know if we, you know, if we're ready to, if we're ready to jump to just these four criteria, or whether we're still gonna regulate the, the mass, bulk, scale, and proportion, and the things that are currently in our Harmony code. So, that's my comment. And question.
Frank, do you want to go ahead and?
Can I clarify, since you've been talking about my interpretation?
Yes, please.
I didn't say you couldn't use metrics. But what I was saying, it became such a focus on the numbers. And if you're just going to focus on the square footage, which seems to be what everyone's focused on, and we all know that the same square footage could look quite different in two different structures. It's just how it's designed. But I was just saying, if you're just gonna limit it on the square footage, and you're gonna tell people, "Well, the average in the community is 2,500, and even though there's a 3,000-square-foot home, or a 3,200-square-foot home, or a 3,500-square-foot home, based on our metrics, you're limited to 2,750." I just, Burt Harris is all about reasonableness, and it's about what, look, you're not guaranteed your same zoning, so we gotta get past that. We can change the zoning, but it has to be proportionate and has to be fair, and it can't be unreasonable. So, that's, I guess, you know, that's how staff came to those recommendations. In response to Mr. Karp, I didn't say I could argue both sides of the Burt Harris, and maybe that's the mic issue. That was architectural review, which was a statutory interpretation issue, which was different. I mean, Burt Harris, we don't have much guidance. There's not many court decisions out there. There's really none that address this specific issue, so we have to rely on the language itself. And again, it's about fairness, it's about reasonableness, and what, you know, and about expectation. So yes, you can come up with metrics, but if those metrics are gonna have the, you know, are gonna say, "Well, you know, you're 300, 400, 500 square feet below what other people have already built in the neighborhood," I just don't, I think that's gonna be hard to defend. So that's, that's where that analysis came from.
I have a question.
All right, well, but we're gonna go one and, Diana, are you finished with your questions? And did you want Frank to answer that question before we move on? And then we'll go to council discussion as well.
I have a question.
Um, I.
I know, DeeDee, hang on. Diana, I don't know if she was.
Yes, yes. The second-story drawing that we have just seen now for the first time. The purpose of these drawings is, is to show the RS1 through RS5 and what their site area regulations are. But all those homes in RS1 and RS5 also currently go through an Appearance Review and a Site Plan. But all those homes in RS1 and RS5 also currently go through an appearance review and a site plan review. Does your rectangle include that?
No, the, the proposal here would be that this would be adopted. It goes into the building site area regulations, the base zoning. There is no more appearance review by the planning and zoning board, because now we have metrics such as the five-foot step back and the FAL. That review comes back to staff.
But there's an underlying assumption in your memo that, oh, I guess that you're just saying that we aren't, that you would get rid of the workshop vote items which were to review harmony, come back with measurable metrics. So you're gonna get, you're gonna get rid of, uh, 34-116B3, or?
So that, that's something that we have to explain, because harmony is not being removed by this. Harmony, it's already in our codes, so that has been mentioned.
But it would be removed from single-family homes, I don't.
No, no, we're building it, harmony, it's already in the zoning districts. These other components would be incorporated into those zoning districts. Uh, and it would be for any zoning district that has a single-family detached dwelling as a use. So it's not just the rich, we also have that in the RMT zoning district, RS2, and, and, I'm sorry, RM2, RM1, and so on. So any use that allows a single-family home, we would allow, we would add this too for single families. Harmony, with the addition of these three, four, you know, depending on, on uh, on the recommendation by CMA and whatever happens with landscape, could be incorporated in that, and that's going to be a tool that further enhances harmony within that zoning district. You're just not going to have a review by an outside, by the planning and zoning board. You're going to have the review by staff, because these metrics are pass or fail. Your mic.
No further questions.
DeeDee?
Hi, Frank. I, I asked this before, and I need to ask it again, and I think it would also help anybody who's listening. When I first read the memo, I saw this as a menu, where we sort of choose the elements, and then was told that um, A and B, the step back of five feet, and the second story FAL work in tandem. Is it possible or doable, or is, why was it done this way? And is it, could we still achieve that aesthetic that people are looking for to try to avoid, you know, just monolithic straight walls? Is it possible to just do the five-foot step back to give homes some kind of textural dimension and not do FAL, or is it possible to do FAL? Well, FAL requires some kind of inset, but can you do setbacks? Can you do the five-foot setback without an FAL?
So it was staff's intention to bring this as a whole, all four of them. We were asked to look at the options, this, these are the options that we gave you. We're here at the direction of council, if you were to ask me, you know, which one would be better to achieve the architectural component of it, uh, or just to reduce or minimize some of the square footage, uh, FAL would actually be the best way to do that.
Because the way I see it is, and I guess this goes into the discussion, but it's not, no one's trying to reduce square footage, I think it's, it's that monolithic slab thing that, that's, you know, towering over other homes, that's making it problematic. So which of these mechanisms?
Well, both of them do that.
They are, yeah.
Both of them do that, it's just, I think FAL.
But you need them together.
FAL gives more flexibility to the design professional, architect, engineer, to design it however they want to, as long as they meet that 75% um, on, on the top level. Where the other one, uh, you know, you, i- if you want the, to max out on the, on the first floor, you're going to have to give an additional five feet on the sides. So, we would still have to look at whether we would allow maybe a balcony to, to, for you to use it as a balcony perhaps. One of the examples that are put in the memorandum, which we actually do have right now, is Saturn Lane, which is a historic district, second stories on Saturn Lane, but just for the front, have to have a five-foot, um, step back. And also, if we look at the Coretta project for the commercial general zoning district, that was a little bit different, because that's anything above the second story, but you go over there, you see that anything below the second story is set back at least five feet. Smartly, you know, or through their, um, design professionals, they're using that as their balconies. But if you go there right now, before they put anything, uh, any of the railings, you actually see it go up two stories, then, and then up again, which, which creates that, um, that feature that you're asking for, uh, not just one big blank wall, monolithic wall.
And I, I think we should point out also to anybody listening, that Lynn, you can confirm that this is what they have adopted in North Palm Beach, and how many years ago was that?
Uh, well, they adopted it, and then they got caught up with Senate Bill 250, repealed it, but re-adopted it, I think in 20, the beginning of 2024. They also, in addition to these, they do have a, you have to incorporate certain elements for articulation, so again, to address the blank wall issue.
And that's not a Burt Harris situation?
Look.
Or they, or they're taking a chance?
As I said, like, right, you're, you're always taking a chance, but it, again, it goes back to this concept of reasonableness and fairness to, to the property owners, and, you know, you can change your regulations, you can make them more restrictive, unless the statute says we can't. Um, but it, it has to be reasonable. It, that, that's, that's the, that's the test. And I can't definitively say what's reasonable. Ultimately, if a claim is filed, and it goes through the system, a court will say what's reasonable.
Thank you.
But I believe this would be reasonable.
Thank you. I, I don't have further questions.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm gonna, DeeDee, I'm gonna go ahead and start with you anyway, just for council discussion. Frank, I think we're done with questions, and we might have some as we go. Um, I just want council, uh, to remember that we directed staff to formulate the memorandum that we received here. Um, it doesn't have to be approved as written. We also did not ask staff to do anything with just base zoning. Um, so that wasn't mentioned at the workshop, so that's why it is not in this memorandum as an option. And the other thing I would like to do is if, if council could number, we've got bullets on page 134. If you could number those bullets, one through six, maybe, so that we know which bullet you're talking about, if you do reference a particular bullet, I think that would help. And DeeDee, I'm gonna go ahead and start with you on discussion.
Well. No pressure. Um, where to begin? I began by going to our town website and looking at our mission and vision. And our town mission says the town of Juno Beach is a partnership of residents, businesses, and town staff creating a hometown atmosphere that emphasizes community involvement, cultural activities, and natural beauty. Our vision says the town of Juno Beach, a seaside community where neighbors join together to share in our exceptional quality of life. So I thought about that. And a lot of what's being said, depending on, I guess, you know, people's opinions, but it, it comes down to quality of life. It is a key element of our town vision. And this is a struggle about, you know, numbers and concepts, just as much as it is, uh, I guess, a balance of, of different people's vision of what our town should be, and how it should grow, and what it should look like. When it comes to, so that, that's the warm fuzzy part of it, and I, I get that there's different visions, and the challenge that I have is to respect all of those visions and, and find a way to meld it together so everyone can feel good about it, because, because that just seems what's right. Um, there is a Cato Institute study, and, and so the next thing, that, that part was that, but then I started trying to find the facts, because I like to make decisions based on, on information. So, I found this Cato Institute study, part of it said statistical results show that rising land use regulation is associated with rising real average home prices in 44 states, and that rising zone regulation is associated with rising real average home prices in 36 states. In general, the states that have increased the amount of rules and restrictions on land use actually have higher housing prices. There's a Freddie Mac study that found that neighborhood aesthetics, such as tree-lined streets, consistent building setbacks and architectural similarity are positively correlated with property values regardless of historic status. The Urban Land Institute reports that place-making and consistent urban design drive real estate value and nonhistoric developments by increasing community identity and walkability. National Association of Realtors notes that buyers are willing to pay 7% to 14% more for homes in neighborhoods with strong architectural controls and visual appeal, even if not historic. So then I looked at our historic districts, and we have, um, you know, beachbound, Zephyr Way, and Saturn Lane. And one of the interesting things about the codes for our historic districts, it says further purposes of this district include enhancement of property values and, um, preservation of scenic views and things like that. And all three historic districts say that all additions, alterations, and new constructions shall be of a design in proportion, which is in harmony with the existing structures in the historic district, historic preservation district. So even though the rest of the town isn't historic, and, and, you know, people don't necessarily want to preserve it, it shows that the home values in beachbound certainly aren't going down, or Saturn Lane or Zephyr Way, because they have those, um, conformity, you know, they have the, I guess, regulations that it, that there has to be harmony in those districts. So this argument that home values are gonna instantly decrease, I, I don't find any tangible evidence of that. What I see is the home values are increasing, and that there's a lot of factors, you know, to Lynn's point, it's not just about square foot. You know, that there's more than square footage that goes into the value of a property. Then I went to our comprehensive plan, and in the housing section, under objective four, policy 4.2, it says the town prefers that every effort should be made to rehabilitate residential structures where possible, rather than to demolish said structures. And the challenge is to balance that with the numbers, so that we're not taking away property rights, so that we're not forcing people to do something that, that they, you know, perceive is, um, disadvantageous to them. You know, so with that, I, I really would like more discussion, and I know there's some people who don't like to discuss things a lot, but I prefer to have more discussion and consideration. You know, we didn't get Frank's calculations prior to just seeing them now. You know, I, I went through the scenario with Frank, and we did some quick numbers, but I think that there's a lot here, a lot of food for thought, a lot of perspectives, and a lot of options. And I'm not 100% convinced that the options in front of us right now are the best ones. They may be the best, but I'm not convinced they are the best. And I would like to see, you know, like to Aldo Rivera's point, you know, a consultant look at this, or a second set of eyes, or, or something else, because this is too big to jump to a conclusion tonight. I, I think it's too big, it's too valuable, and it's too important, and we're not doing anybody, regardless of their point of view, a, a good service, if we force a decision on everybody, and, and I just don't want to do that. So I would be in favor of moving this to a consultant, or to have staff do further calculations with base zoning and some of the other options. So, I, I'm open to a further discussion.
Okay, thank you. Mary Ann?
Yeah, I was hoping this was going to be more clarification, but, uh, after hearing already DeeDee and Diana speak, i- i- it's just getting more confusing. And I'm going back to Jim Ferguson, who said, "Simple, fair, simple, and certain." And, uh, these three terms really, for me, incorporate everything that I would like to do. Now, before 2024, before we had this, uh, ordinance 780, there was harmony, more harmony amongst the citizens of the town than now. Is that, uh, I at least felt this way, that this definition, this ordinance, 780, that was supposed to be about harmony, really brought out divisiveness in our town. And it's ironic that we want harmony by making people going against each other, by setting up two teams. And I, I would like to not discuss it forever, because, uh, I think the atmosphere in this town is not good. People send surveys out, people write newsletters, people, uh, concerned, anonymous people get involved. It just stirs the pot, and I would like it to calm down. Now, I'm asking Frank, before that harmony in 2024, did, there was harmony in the code, right? I mean, i- i- they weren't just building without any kind of, uh, restrictions, with any kind of harmony concept?
Yes, uh, as I mentioned, each zoning district is in harmony with, within itself. RS1 is not necessarily in harmony with RS2 or RS3, but all the homes within its own zoning district, yes, because they all have to follow the same regulations.
So harmony is not just a new invention, et cetera, no. And I wanted you to know that the sketches you provided were, you know, not too difficult for intelligent people like us here to interpret. I mean, we just discovered that there is not much of a difference between a five-foot setback and a 75% floor plan. And since both minimize the floor, the footage of the second floor, they both could be acceptable, since North Palm Beach did already the five-foot, uh, setback, and so far has not gotten any, uh, lawsuits. I would say that's a good thing to follow. And, uh, I just think this has to stop. And we should just find a way to bring it to a reasonable ending that both, somehow both sides can accept. Come to a consensus, not say, oh, another workshop, we hire a consultant, we give it to a firm. Everything involves money and time, and nobody has helped, and there will be more newsletters going out, more insults exchanged, and I do not like this. So I, I would like to call on you to come up with a reasonable solution tonight. And I appeal to your heart, I mean, you all want harmony, let's start with harmony amongst ourselves, with the citizens of this town. Let's not split each other up. What's going on? We are not even 4,000 people. And we have two sides? It's not good, think about it. I need a candy.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Diane?
Well, um, let's, let's look at what the residents want. I mean, I sent out the constant contact survey to my email list prior to our May 2nd workshop on appearance review, where architectural review and the harmony criteria, bulk, mass, scale, and proportion were discussed. And I did get 256 responses as of May 2nd, I mean, as of May 21st. At our workshop, where I didn't have a working microphone, that went over what the survey results were, and there were close to 200 responses. I wanted to update you with the current survey results. I did give a packet to all the town council members and, uh, and to Caitlin for the record. And so, to preserve value with architectural review and harmony, which is hot size of structures when I talk about harmony, I know people have said they have different definitions of harmony, but when I talk about harmony, it's the, the size criteria. The reviews for single-family structures, on question four of the survey, there were 244 responses, or was, that's 97%. That the best way to protect property values and preserve the character of Juno Beach is to adopt and maintain the character of Juno Beach is to adopt and maintain carefully crafted land development codes that give the planning and zoning staff and board the tools to evaluate the size of structures in context. This helps preserve a sense of place, maintain a park-like setting, and protects the town's character and quality of life for current residents. And question number five, there were 252 responses to this question, so this percentage has changed based on how many responses and Constant Contact gives you that information. So question number five, there were 237 people who believe that new development should be subject to architectural standards that ensure consistent quality and aesthetic appeal, contributing positively to the overall value of the community. And 252 responded to that question. Question number three, there were 230 people, or 90%, who said maintaining our existing harmony code provisions which evaluate bulk, mass, scale, and proportion of a new structure compared to buildings within 300 feet, that we should maintain these. And the, I would also appoint you to question two, which is on page two of the package I gave you. There was, there was 194 people, or 76% of the respondents, that requested that we give the planning and zoning staff clear guidance on the application of these harmony codes. Also in question two, it was a multi-part question, there was 194 people that said, do not repeal the harmony codes, the town's already invested in professional land use planning, let's allow these three contracted and budgeted consultants working on community vision master plan, our strategic work plan, including growth management and the, and the Shinmore and Associate potential code improvements, allow them to provide their expert recommendations before making permanent changes. So that's what the public wants and...
Okay, hang on, guys. Hold on, hold on. We're, hold on, guys. Hold on, we just need the council to speak right now.
As I said, this did go to my Constant Contact mailing list and I know you're on it, Mr. Stelludo, and I did receive your response and your wife's response. So, and that, you're included in the survey. It wasn't in, it wasn't...
John, John, we can't do that from the...
It wasn't intended to be a poll of all the residents. It was, it's just, it's a data point from the people who received my newsletter and it is not just single-family residents, it's all Juno Beach residents. Because I would ask you, when the condominiums that line our beach have their termination and teardowns, do the single-family homeowners also want to be part of that discussion as to what's going to be built back? I think we all do. So it's, it is our whole community and what they would like to do to preserve property values and the character of the town. So in, in addition to what our residents want, we look at studies and I appreciate DeeDee Halpern saying that and mentioning that Cato study. I've looked at the MIT dissertation and peer, scientific peer-reviewed studies and I do have a list of studies, but since I already had this big packet to hand out, I didn't hand this out to the town council, but I'm willing to give you the list of the studies that I reviewed and then citations where you can look at them on the internet. So, and these studies say that property values in communities with land development codes that preserve character and sense of place hold their value even when there's a downturn in the real estate market. And this means that these communities have a higher cost per square foot than communities who do not have the land development codes that place, in place, that preserve their character, which if you don't have those codes in place, you're ultimately a less desirable community. And this makes sense because think of why you chose Juno Beach instead of Miami Beach, instead of Fort Lauderdale, or even Singer Island. Those unique characteristics are what we can maintain by creating land development codes so that the charm and uniqueness of our community is not lost for future generations. I also believe that these discussions are very separate concepts and we shouldn't mush them together. We, we saw how Mr. Karp got confused between the harmony legal interpretation versus the architectural review legal interpretation. So in this packet that I gave you, in the package that I gave you that has, it's on page six and it's the, it's got the clip on it, if the council wants to look at this, it's just our 34-116 Perrin 3B1, Architectural Review, and the, and then 34-116 B2 Harmony Criteria. So these are our existing codes in Juno Beach for Architectural Review and Harmony. And the, the comment, I'll just reiterate what Lynn had said because Architectural Review has been around for so long, it predates the Burt Harris Act, which was 1995. And our Harmony Criteria has been in place for two years with the second year having more definitions. So I have, I have a PowerPoint that, that's kind of my idea, well, what happens if our architectural, if codes go away and if, if we don't have the harmony review, we won't be able to deny the setback-to-setback vertical rectangles that maximize square footage. We heard horror, horror stories about a white rectangle that's, that's setback-to-setback. No way to deny more affordable, like do-it-yourself kit homes. I know that everyone got excited when Leslie Thomas gave her presentation in January. She was the advocate for the 700 Ocean Drive PUD, putting two houses together. And in her analysis, if we didn't have the harmony codes for size of buildings, the lot on Olympus would be able to have a 19,000-square-foot home. And I, I know that makes the, the maximum square footage people very excited about that, but also think the other side, if you get the kit homes, that there's no review over materials, no review over roof lines, balconies, window placements, porches, and these are the attributes under the town, under the protocols that we talked about at the workshop for deciding when you could have a particular structure. If you, if you were over two times the average, then you start looking at mitigating factors. And these mitigating factors are the architectural design of slope, roof, porches, balconies, articulation of walls. So that's how you mitigate these large projects currently under our harmony codes. So the, the houses that, that I envision in our future, if we get rid of our existing harmony codes and we, do you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, no, you're giving me too much information.
Well, it's my turn. Let me finish.
I cannot digest.
It's my turn.
Information that I cannot digest it. It would be better you gave me less...
It's my turn.
Diane, Mary Ann, we need to let her finish, okay? Give her her time.
It's in her interest that we all understand what she is saying.
Yeah, I know.
I'll talk slower. The, the kit homes that you can buy online, you know, if we can put those lot line to lot line, then they would be the little rectangle houses with metal sides. And people say, you know, I am being a bit sarcastic, but you know, what if you have a lot here and you want to do something that's cheap and easy and you're, it's, this isn't all about 19,000 square feet on Olympus, maybe we could get a kit home. And if you don't like the rectangles, if you want something of, with a more organic feel, you could do Quanza Hut. This doesn't allow for stacking like the other one does, but maybe it could be your top floor. The, the setback-to-setback metal, black metal buildings, this, this was in Architectural Magazine. This wouldn't work for the max square footage people because it does have some cutouts on the side and that doesn't give you your max footage. And also in Juno Beach, you wouldn't have a, you wouldn't have a slope to your roof, it'd be a flat roof, so you could add your, your third story, the little, your little cupola, the small tower. So this, this is potentially what we could get with no architectural review. And again, here's another picture, metal house, really interesting. This one does have cutout, remember, you wouldn't have that because it doesn't give you your max square footage. And the last slide in this one was that these building design elements are part of the current review and that's how you get a larger house because you have the pedestrian scale with the articulation and the porches and the balconies and things. So if we go back to Lynn Rubin's memo on Architectural Review that says that he could argue it either way, so we do have permission based on Lynn's memo that we got, that, oh, this is another memo, sorry. This is the architecture that we're giving up. These, these are the illustrations that Frank did in a 2020 memo. I really like this memo and have gone back to it several times while on planning and zoning. This is our Victorian, our Key West houses. This is the Mediterranean. It's not a showing? Can you show what my screen is? This is the, this is the Key West Victorian that's in our code now. This is the residence for Mediterranean. It's got the barrel tile roof. And then this is the, this is the rendering for the mid-century modern houses that are indigenous to the community. So this is what we're giving up if we give up Architectural Review. And another thing that, so going back to Lynn Rubin's memo about what the risk is, the risk is that we would have to defend our board decision on Architectural Review. So that's a writ of certiorari lawsuit. And we've had, we have lots of the writ of certiorari lawsuits, so we should be able to quantify what they cost the town. And we do have some insurance for different types of lawsuits that I understand that we're insured against a Burt Harris claim. But, so those, the, the writ of certiorari lawsuit is you go to the courthouse and you, you have to just defend the action. There's, there's no penalties, there's no, there's no cost, it's not like a personal injury claim, so there would be no penalties, no punitive damages, no prevailing party attorney fees. It's just the cost of what your, your action is to defend a board decision. And I guess currently we have one with the Polte because they thought that it's complicated issues, but they felt like the town wasn't following our codes, they want a smaller project there or something. And then the, there's a potential for Mr. Shaw to file one, but I know Peggy, you did a writ of certiorari for your house.
I personally did not, Diane, no.
Oh, well, I do, I do have a copy of it, you can...
Yeah, my name is not on that.
I, I thought Peggy Davies, Davies was you? And then Anton, and that was to, to, you want the town to follow our codes. I thought it was to make the house bigger. And then we've got the, the Dean Anton was the lead plaintiff on, against the Venus Drive house to make that, that duplex smaller, or there's some other issues, but it's basically following our codes. I, yeah, this one's 50, 2006, CA 3682 is Middle District and the Anton one is 50, 2019, CA 5516. I just, I think we have these a lot of times, so I don't think that we should, we should, and it doesn't, I don't think that we should pursue policy based on whether we're going to have a lawsuit or not. It's, if that was to take that to an extreme, you know, we wouldn't open the bathrooms in Town Hall because we'd be afraid of a slip and fall, we wouldn't have social events because of risk of a lawsuit. It's just, it's not a good way to legislate. So, and the last thing about, the last thing about Architectural Review is Lynn Rubin said that we don't have our legislative analysis yet, but Senate Bill 180, it's the emergency response, it's meant to help towns that are rebuilding after a hurricane. We're included in the coverage because of some of the FEMA designations that are in that language. And it wouldn't allow any new, if the governor signs it, so the, both houses have passed it, it's sitting on the governor's desk, there's every indication that he will sign it, but no new land development regulations that are more stringent or burdensome going back to August 2024. And the Architectural Review has been around since before Burt Harris, but if we get rid of it now, it's gone forever. So when this town council is thrown out because we made bad decisions, the new town council won't be able to fix this. So to get back that, you know, our Key West Victorian, our Mediterranean styles, we won't be able to. And so I think it's grand to have a design review book. I agree with a design review book, but it would be meaningless if we aren't able to enforce that through our Appearance Review and the Architectural Codes. I, I think it'd be a huge mistake based on the potential for a writ of certiorari, which those get filed all the time, we, we know that with just my experience here. And I, I don't think that that's the way we should legislate for Architectural Review. And so moving on to harmony. I, in the workshop, the workshop vote was to retain the, the review of the size of new projects in context with the neighborhood. It was a split vote. There was an agreement by all that our harmony Appearance Review criteria should be clear and easier to understand. I don't think it's a good idea to get rid of our harmony codes or to move these reviews to staff or, that we did have the harmony codes in place August 2024, so that's not at risk for the Senate Bill 180, but if we, and, you know, we, I think we should wait for Lynn's determination, but you can make clarifications of existing codes. So even if Senate Bill 180 is passed, we can still move forward with harmony and get these metrics more quantifiable. And so, and I would like to get straight on vocabulary, so probably, well, I need Lynn's help with this. So the taking of property's rights, is it a taking to have baseline zoning with that zoning regulates the size of your structure? A takings claim versus a Burt Harris claim?
A takings claim denies all reasonable use of the property. So we're not talking about takings claim because you could, no matter what, even if we adopted the most restrictive version, it would still not deny all reasonable, they could still be used for a single-family home. Burt Harris was meant to fill that gap where you're not taking all reasonable use, but you're, you're burdening to the extent that the owner cannot recover their investment back to expectation.
So in, in the packet, the very last, the very last clip, pieces of paper are takings claims versus inverse combination condemnation versus Burt Harris claims. And the, so this fear mongering and dividing the community, the, the fear mongering, I believe takes place when you say that it's takings of property. And maybe that it's semantics and people don't understand that there's a legal definition of takings and it's, as Lynn said, it takes away all, all use. It would be, Juno Beach wants to put a road through your property so you can no longer have a house. It's, it's, a taking isn't saying that you can have five bedrooms versus seven bedrooms or bathrooms or whatever it is. So that's not a takings. So the takings of properties are, you know, those are the words that cause people to be so upset. This Burt Harris claim is an inordinate burden on the property. And with the Burt Harris claims, under, under the harmony definition, if the decision was challenged, if our board decision was challenged based on an inordinate burden, then there's a 90-day notice of claim. And I'm not an expert on Burt Harris. I do believe that the council should ask Lynn Rubin to give us, to give us a memo on the Burt Harris, but it requires a 90-day notice of claim by the person who's alleging this inordinate burden. They have to provide appraisals. They have to provide appraisals and that show that inordinate burden. And then during that 90 day timeframe, there can be a settlement discussion. And you don't have to throw out that rule. You just have to throw out the rule if it, how it, if it protect, if it impacts a particular piece of property in a way that's, would be an inordinate burden, then you can settle with that case, settle with that particular property owner. And so the option remains to grant a waiver in these rare instances. And with the Burt Harris claim, you don't even have to follow our comprehensive plan. I did appreciate DeeDee bringing up the comprehensive plan because our comprehensive plan does require, it does, it anticipates architectural review to retain the character of the community. That's a policy in our architectural plan. So, I mean, that's a policy in our comprehensive plan. So with a Burt Harris claim, you, we, we don't necessarily have to follow our comprehensive plan, but the town does have a timeframe to settle those claims. I listened to the Thousand Friends of Florida presentation on Burt Harris Act. And I, I believe that Peggy did and some other people on council. And Richard Grosso gave that presentation and he said, and I'm reading from his slide. "In order to settle a valid Harris Act claim, a local government may issue a development order that's inconsistent with this comprehensive plan, which otherwise be strictly prohibited." And his key takeaway from it was that local governments and other agencies should not compromise their generally applicable standards for fear of a Harris Act liability. The option always remains to grant a waiver from these standards in a relatively rare instance where the application of those standards to a specific landowner would cause an inordinate burden. And we know that those are rare circumstances because it's been around since 1995 and we haven't had any of these claims in, in Juno Beach. So so that's it. Go ahead, John. I, well, I'll go ahead. If I, if, I would like to make a motion to keep our architectural review for single family homes as described in 34-116, Perin B 31. Can I get a second?
I would second that.
Thank you. We can continue our discussions or do the vote.
I think the mayor ought to rule that motion out of order.
I don't think, Lynn, that anyone can pull a motion if they want, right?
They can make
I mean, we haven't finished discussion. We can continue discussion. I don't think
Yeah, discussion's
Excuse me, Diana. Hang on just a second. I don't think it's proper to do that until everyone's had a discussion and everyone can hear the rest of the council members' thoughts.
And, and that's the basis of out of order. Because I think we all, we all need a chance to, you know, go down the list, go down the line as, as the mayor said.
It can be
Lynn, what, Diane, I just, wait a second. John is talking. Let Lynn answer John's question, okay?
No, I agree. We should finish, there's a motion, there's a second, but we're still in the discussion of the first issue. So I would wait until that's concluded before you consider to more discuss the motion and vote on the motion.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Diane, are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay. First of all, I didn't want to, I didn't want to start here, but I'm not sure exactly what you're saying. We got 50,000 pages from you and you covered a lot of detail on a lot of different things. And I'm not sure who you're having this discussion with. Are you trying to convince me of something or the other council members? Or, because it's, it's obviously more than we could, we could bite off and discuss tonight. We, each individual thing we can discuss, they're valid. I understand that you don't want to give up architectural review. We can talk about that and that's fine. But all these things, I, 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 I'm not getting your drift. I hate, I just, I have no other way to say it. But if you're trying to convince me of something, you're, you're, you're not getting anywhere with me. Because it's too much. I, I agree with Mary Ann. It's just, it's just too much to bite off right now. I do agree with DeeDee 100% that the, some of the answer, the answers are in our, our mission statement and our code to get along. I think DeeDee said no one's trying to reduce the square footage of our homes, but we have to look to our mission, you know, our, what, what brought us to Juno Beach in the first place. Need to, need to internalize that. I do, I do appreciate what the mayor said in the beginning. And let's see if I, if I jotted it down. There's a lot of stuff. She said there's, we're not talking, we're not taking away harmony, but we're finding a solution to not having harm from houses that are too big, but we're also protecting personal copyrights. And as a council, we need to get down to basics, I believe. And, and all those things are included that people mentioned, but I look at it a different way. I thought, where were, what were we trying to, what was the council and trying to achieve two years ago? When this first started? This came up a little over two years ago in Harmony and that ordinance 780 got put into place. So I would like to, during this discussion time that we have, which is, which is valuable, you know, get to that point where at least you could educate me what the council was trying to achieve in, in, in May 2023, when 780 was initially discussed and passed on first reading unanimously by the council, by the Planning and Zoning Board, by the council again. The second thing I'd like to discuss is that do we, does anyone disagree that 780 has to go? Or, or, or is there, is there a disagreement that we, that we find 780, did it achieve what the council was trying to do two years ago? Does it need a little change? Does it need a whole new ordinance? I, that's a basic question. I think we need to discuss that. We need to discuss also, are we okay with how the staff is implementing ordinance 780? If you like it, well, let's, we continue with that. If not, we have to decide what we should change. And if we should change it, what the changes should be? Is Lynn okay with it? Is the staff okay? Is it viable? But we have to decide what the status quo is. So in case we leave tonight without a resolution, we need to know how things are going to be tomorrow. So we need to talk about a little bit, what is exactly the status quo? Make sure we all understand it. So I, that's, that's the topics that I would like to address. But maybe we could start, and, and I guess the mayor still needs to speak. And then we're going to take a break, right? We promised a break. That was the deal. We started a half an hour early. Condition was we get a break, right, Mary Ann?
Right. I negotiated it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
On the issue of architectural, should we give up our architectural review? Yes, that's, that, that's on the top of our list. When we come back from break, I think that we should talk about that and, and, you know, elaborate on that. And I, I think that we, that we talked about it at the workshop. I don't think we can, even if we want to maintain that architectural review. And I'll explain why when we get back. But I think that, you know, that's the direction we're going. So no matter how much extra discussion we have on it, I think that's where we're going to end up. But I'll stop there. And I hope when we get back, we can, you know, address some of those basic things that seem to be eluding us.
Okay, so we're going to take just a three minute. Can everybody go to the restroom in three minutes?
How about three minutes?
Trying to keep the show on the road.
Three minutes.
I thought you were
Okay, we'll do fine.
Yeah, I know. Did you, did you go over it? Did you want to talk?
It might take a while, but we'll take a quick break so that everybody can go and then I'll come back. You could decide if you want to go on or not.
I mean, I'm sitting here now three hours.
Okay, let's go. It's time for a break. Yes.
The meeting is starting again. We do have, I know there was a request to have Mr. Atkinson come up and start his review on the gazebo, but I think that would break up the...
No, I'm sorry. Can I clarify? I said, I had thought that we could let him go and bring him back another time, not to start the presentation, but to allow him to leave because we might be here another hour and I feel bad and I believe he said he could come back.
Yeah, I think that's acceptable to let him.
Thank you so much for...
Of course. Yeah, I'm sorry. Rob had said that we wanted him to do his presentation.
No, no.
Okay.
The opposite, no.
Mr. Atkinson, I'm sorry we've made you wait so long, but you know, thank you and we'll have you back. Okay. Okay, John, we're gonna let you continue here.
Well, I did have, you know, we started out on, do we have questions for Frank? That it morphed into whatever it morphed into, but I did have one thing I just wanted to get, two, I guess, two things I wanted to get on the record. One, somebody mentioned, I put Harmony in the code 1992. 1992, I was living in Baltimore. And I had nothing to do with Harmony in 1992. So, the other thing is Lynn, this came up a few times about Lynn's analysis of my suggestion at the workshop that we use a methodology where we take the average of the things in the area. And this is in response to people talking about how do we quantify, we don't have quantifiable metrics and they seem to be vague. And I said, we take the average plus or minus a percentage. And I didn't limit the percentage. And I know the staff was saying, you know, I did a 10%, 20%, 50%. And somehow, that's in, that's in Lynn Rubin's analysis even at 50%. Why didn't say stop at 50%? It'd be 500%. I just said the council could set the limit. And it didn't say there was a low limit. And that was, it was just a methodology. And, and so I don't understand the, you know, the whole point of, you know, addressing the Burt Harris. And of course we know that. You know, if you limit it to, you know, just what's there now, of course there's gonna be a claim by somebody. That, that's a no-brainer. We didn't have to elaborate on that. But anyways, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that because I did get an email and said, you know, somehow the staff said I was wanting to limit it to whatever was there now at the average. Absolutely, absolutely not true. And I talked to Frank at the, at the food truck. There's some kind of miscommunication there. That percentage is plus or minus whatever you want to make it to be, you know? And that's, and that's the gist of it. And that's what I explained at the workshop. It was at the end, it was prompting a discussion, I talked to John about it, you know, to let you know. I wasn't saying just the average. I could see, anybody could look at the math and say, yes, at the average, you restricted the building at its trouble. End of my explanation there. So, with that, I'll pass the, pass the microphone over to the mayor.
Okay. I want to start, there's been a lot set up here. First, the quality of life is relative, isn't it? Your quality of life and how we feel we want our quality of life is relative to how you want to live. So that's one thing. I think that we've had probably three real estate professionals and one that is a certified appraiser up here telling us that properties will lose value. I just wanted to make that statement because I think people are suggesting that that is not, could not happen, but I just want to make sure everyone knows that that, that could happen. Condos are not having their property rights taken away. So, you know, Diana, when you say they should be included in those, the decision, well, you know, if they rebuild their properties, you know, it's not their property rights that are being taken away. So the point there is the people that did sign that were going to have their property rights taken away, that's an important point to just, just make note of. I know that, I wish you wouldn't have brought up that survey, Diane, because I am gonna have to say something about it because this is too important of a topic to let that go. And I think your survey obviously was inherently flawed. I think it misled the citizens. And I'm gonna make some statements about what it said. It talked about, do you want our land development codes or developers to decide the size of building projects in town? So that right there was very misleading to our residents. Another one, council members want to take away all codes for new buildings. Totally untrue statement. Comparing a council member that supports creating and maintaining well-thought-out development codes to direct the size of new building projects in our town versus allowing developers to decide. I don't, I don't think all, these are developers necessarily coming in here. I think residents want their property rights. Another statement which, you know, I feel is really a scare tactic was, without architectural review risks, we risk becoming a patchwork of incongruent structures, each one eroding the character and cohesiveness of the neighborhood. And then you did show some soft kit homes with, you know, I don't know if they were lot line to lot line, I don't know what that's about because there's still setbacks. So to me, Diane, and I think this is so important to us and we might have to talk about it at our, at our code of conduct because we've got to stop these newsletters that are inciting people, you know? When I have to spend my time to write things that say, hey, this is not true, this is misleading, I don't want to have to do that. You know, it says, then you wrote, over time, this affects not just aesthetics, but walkability. So it's gonna take away walkability? No, it's not, Diane. Neighborhood relations and ultimately property values. Walkability is not affected, neighborhood relations is relative to your neighbors and your property, you actually reversed the fact that it, it's going to hurt the people that you're taking away the property rights from. Council members are disregarding opinions or dismissing the public opinions. That one is very divisive. These are the things that we have to stop doing. Newsletters can't, should not distort the issues. We shouldn't be doing that to rationalize and mislead residents into believing one thing or another. When I wrote my facts about the, or my statements about the values of homes going down when you take the square footage away, I knew what I was talking about. So I don't make that up. And, and you know, any time that we start to cross this line on taking property rights, we're gonna see an issue in this town. There's no doubt we're gonna see that issue. But I don't, I don't think that's the self-kit homes. You could do that now if you wanted to. So, well, why would you be able to do it then? Because, no, I'm not asking you a question, never mind. Okay. I don't think we're giving up styles and I'll tell you why in just a little bit. But anyway, the residents are advocating, and I can see both sides of this. I understand nobody wants their property rights taken away, but I also understand that there are individuals that don't want big houses next to them, you know? And, and that's fine, and, but how do we fix it? That's the question. So I know that the residents that are the property rights group are advocating to stay with the base zoning codes because that's governed Juneau Beach since 1992. They feel it safeguarded their home values. I also agree that Jim Ferguson, you know, when he talked about longstanding codes promoted fairness, consistency, architectural harmony, I agree with that. They have, you know, I know that they're expressing strong opposition to replacing that ordinance with other areas and I'll tell you why. And my analogy of these as well. And when I asked Frank about how much square footage you would lose in both the step back and the FAL, it was gonna be between $790,000 to $875,000 on these homes based on what his, his projection was. But if you, you know, if you do a step back, which can actually make your, your house cost prohibitive to build it all, because what you have to do when you build in is you can't go up on the outside walls of that home. And so then you're having to breach the roof, you're having to put columns in, you're having to figure out structurally how to manage all that. It probably wouldn't be possible for you to build up on your house, then you're gonna have to tear it down and that's a whole other level too. So by doing anything that has a setback or 75%, it creates another problem for these The other, so those were the two. Landscape open percentage is currently being reviewed by Chen Moore. I think we can wait and see what they come back with. We already do have landscape, landscape percentages that we use in town, but let's look at what some options are. Some of the options that we have are, they could create, the staff in town could create a design pattern booklet. And that would offer design elements to give architectural relief and it can guide the homeowners and highlight the town's desired architectural styles. Now, granted, we can't force that, but this could work in addition, it works in addition with our building site area regulations in place, you know, in place for the benefit of Harmony and for the benefit of the neighboring homes without affecting property rights. We can strengthen the landscape requirements to support that visual harmony across neighborhoods. And I think those two things, you know, we can do and it's not gonna hurt our property owners. And I think we just need to encourage that aesthetic consistency without infringing on property rights. And, you know, I don't know if anybody's interested in this, but, you know, in my conversation, I know that we could set requirements for landscape that we can actually give them, entice them into doing this and give them, what is it that you said, Rob? What were the words that you used?
Simply to, you know, incentivize use of the design booklet that we create. There could be some sort of bonuses for particular sites that choose to comply with a suite of standards in that booklet. So it's a more of a carrot approach rather than a regulatory stick. But that would be after the book is created and we come up with a methodology to provide that sort of incentive. And, and that might, you know, again, help with this notion that the book itself as a voluntary mechanism may not achieve a high level of compliance. But motivating people with some land development incentive could conceivably do that. And we've heard of at least one instance where a large house was viewed as acceptable on that lot because they did precisely that. They incorporated some of the landscaping pieces, some of the architectural design pieces, and that larger house, despite its size, was viewed as not necessarily aesthetically offensive. So if we can use this design review booklet, first of all, as an option, but secondly, and perhaps even more importantly, as an incentive at some point, I think that might be a very good tool to leverage.
And that is an option where we're not taking, regulating single-family homes and taking, and when I say taking, I use that in the form of property rights and we're taking away square footage, I should say, on someone's property rights. And those are the things that we should be looking at. We need to keep, you know, we can't stop, we can't stop individuals from wanting to build their homes. You know, these ranch-style houses are not going to be there forever and they are gonna want to change it. And I'm not sure why we want to come in and, and not allow the people that have wanted to build, to build. You know, we've let a lot of the homes right now do that and there's no reason why we should stop it now, but we do have to, to consider the individuals that don't want to look at it, don't want to look at the larger homes. You know, maybe we do ask for that booklet to have relief, to have balconies. I think the relief on the buildings is a good thing, but let's do it voluntarily versus with, you know, incentivizing them versus taking away somebody's rights. You talked a little bit about how did this happen, right? You wanted to know why this started, why we had 10 votes. It started, I went back to the very beginning of this and Diana, back in December of 2020, it was December 2020 that I had my first email from you, I think. And then throughout that two-year period, I know that you were pushing this. Now, there's, you, you did, now, wait a second, Diana, let me finish.
Doesn't all count?
Diana, stop a second. Let me finish.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
No, it was when you were on planning and zoning. And there's nothing wrong with you pushing it because that's what you wanted. I'm just saying this is how it started. John was asking the question, where did it start? Because I did look at that. The reason we had 10 votes up there, five for planning and zoning and five for council, and maybe some of the council members would have voted for it anyway, is because it was defining harmony. That was all it was doing. I could show you both memorandums, John, and it only defined harmony. And I said at that time, I think, well, this is not doing very much. It's just defining a word. We had no explanation of how it affected our single-family homes whatsoever, not in the memorandum, not in our discussion. And that's why we've gone the wrong direction with this. And we can't let that happen again because our residents need to have transparency, they need to know what's going on, and I guess we do too. So that's exactly how this whole issue started and why we got 10 votes out of it, five for planning and zoning and five for council. And did you have another question? Let's see, going through some of these points that... Okay, I do want to mention something about lawsuits because I have to agree, I don't think it's, I don't want to see this town get sued. And I don't think it's gonna be a small lawsuit, I think this is gonna be a big lawsuit. And it's, could be a class action, it could be individuals. We have not had that many lawsuits, Diana. I can tell you that one that you were speaking of was way back in 2017, 2018, something like that. But property rights will cause people to sue. That's gonna happen. They don't want that, they don't want their property rights taken away. I'm gonna read part of an attorney letter of someone that actually did go to an attorney locally. He talked about what was happening here and this is the result, this is the letter that he wrote. He wrote, pursuant to the Burt J. Harris Private Property Rights Protection Act, if a municipality takes an action which essentially takes away a vested right or substantially reduces that vested right, then the owner, property is entitled to compensation for the loss suffered as a result of such governmental action. The measure of the damages for such loss would be the difference in the fair market value before the governmental action was taken as compared to the fair market value after such governmental action was taken. The process for bringing such an action requires that once the government action is taken and final, you will need to get an appraisal of property showing the differences described above and send that along with your claim. Such notice must be given 90 days prior to filing any action. During such 90-day period, the town has the right to respond with written settlement offers that could adjust the code restriction, transfer development rights, as well as numerous other potential settlement offers. If no settlement offer is agreed to during that 90-day period, you would then be permitted to file an appropriate action in the circuit court. I think that when I'm looking at Frank give us amounts from, you know, around $800,000 as a loss, I think we're gonna have suits. And I'm not, I'm a fiduciary of this town. I don't want to have to raise taxes of our citizens because we decided to take a chance on something. We decided not to follow the state statute. We decided that we're better and we know more than the attorneys around town that are gonna sue us. I'm not willing to take that chance. I think we have to follow the rules and we have to watch the budgets, the reserves, you know, raising our residents' taxes and we need to find ways to do that where we're not gonna be in lawsuits. So I am, I know there's a motion on the table, John, I know you want to finish, so if you want to bring out some other points that you have and then we can go down the line again as well.
I brought up the points I'd like to discuss, but could we, could I, could we discuss that? The council won't take long.
Sure.
Appreciate, I appreciate that. My initial question was, what, what was the council trying to achieve in May 2023? And I know I have all those memos, but this blue book is Harmony. All of the memos that I could find, all of the staff agenda backup materials, and I, and I did read that. And, but I don't know what conversations might have been between the town manager and, and council members or people and all of the background information because I wasn't here. But obviously, the council was trying to achieve something two years ago and they passed this harmony definition. And my, my initial question is, what was the council trying to achieve? And I do understand they were trying to more define harmony, but why? Why was the council trying to more define harmony? To do what? What was the goal? Mary Ann, maybe you...
I'm just trying to think about it. There was a lot of discussion in the planning and zoning, on the planning and zoning board. And they even, I remember at one point of time, they even rejected to take the architectural review at one point of time and let the staff do it. And then there was a lot of talk, how could that be done? And I guess, you know, harmony sounded good to me, la, 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 you know? I was singing with it. And I never, I never realized what the ramifications were for the homeowners. It was not discussed in any details. It was just like a beautiful ideal and it seemed wonderful, but we didn't really discuss what would happen to the individual property rights. And when I first heard it, I was shocked that I had voted on this with everybody else. And, and just because I made once a mistake doesn't mean I have to keep on making the same mistake, you know?
So you thought, you thought it was helpful to the planning board and whoever was reviewing plans?
Yeah.
You thought it was helpful?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? What was the...
Yeah.
Anybody else? What was the...
I'm willing to share. I was hearing from residents at the time who were unhappy with some of the houses that were being built around them. So I lived on Jupiter Lane at the time and up the street, I don't remember the address, but the people who lived there had, there was a big home on, I guess, South Juno Lane was built. It had like three levels to it, and it was just huge and massive, and it caused those people to move. It was just, as somebody said, you know, they were in their backyard and they're getting, you know, splashed by somebody else's pool. The house was massive, and I continued to hear from residents, I didn't bring this to the planning and zoning board, I didn't initiate it, but I was on board with it because I kept hearing from people that they were dissatisfied with the bulk, size, and mass exactly that which harmony defines or addresses. And they, the current residents felt like their rights were being violated, that they lived here 20, 30 years, and their right to a harmonious backyard without lights shining in their bedroom windows was being violated by some of the new builds. And that, so when this came to us, it resonated with me, and it made sense to do something. Now, again, there's obviously an unintended consequence. Staff never brought us a calculation. And, you know, I'm not placing blame, I'm just saying that, you know, P&amp;Z didn't ask for calculations, we didn't ask for calculations. I watched those meetings, and I watched how smoothly it all passed. I don't think anybody was in the audience. Nobody asked questions, there was no big debates, it just seemed to make sense. Nobody in these single-family homes, I can only speak for this Ridge area, you know, I don't, I can't speak to a PUD, but there was an increased recognition that some of these builds, you know, not only maybe looked offensive, but felt offensive when you, to the people who were living near it. There was, you know, light spillover, you know, noise and things that came with setbacks that were very close. And so while people say that, oh, we've had the harmony code for a very long time and it's worked, it's only worked because there wasn't this desire to just build a big slab house that maximized the, I guess, lot coverage. So some of the things, our mechanisms worked for the time that, in which they were created, but they're not working for the evolution of the town. And I, and I think I recognized that our codes need to evolve with the needs of the people. And it was never about taking any, I don't think any of us, you know, of course, nobody wants to take away somebody's rights or, you know, value or anything like that. I think we all set out with our best intentions and our best foot forward, and we thought we were doing something good. You know, I trust everyone here is passionate, obviously, and the best intentions just didn't work out as we had planned. And, you know, and the house on Venus Drive, you know, that led to some complaints and some recognition that, you know, stark, massive walls, and even though that's not single-family, you know, neighbors who abutted that were upset.
Could I ask you, you said it looked, to some people, it looked offensive, it felt offensive?
Yeah.
Was it, was it...
I think it's, that's that sort of, you know, quality...
That it was actually, that they felt it was too big or it looked too big?
You would have to ask them, you're asking me to, I can't remember people's exact words, you know, for some people, I can't interpret the way people interpret their looks and feels. I'm just saying that the mass and bulk and scale were what was causing people grief if they were living next to it. So...
There's two different things. You're talking about people that lived next to it felt their property rights were being violated.
Yeah, yeah.
Some people...
That's what I heard at that time.
People next door, but are you saying other people that are not next door?
Yeah, I think also there was a general sense that even for people who did not live next door and have a direct impact, also noticed the change of our skyline and, oh, this is ugly or this is massive, and we were, excuse me, they're speaking and it's, it's not good. You know, so they were losing the aesthetic appeal that they had loved about their community.
Okay, you mentioned looked, people thought it looked ugly?
But that's subjective.
I get you, but I'm saying that it was an attempt to try to do something.
To make it harmonious, to use our codes, to create better aesthetics that made people feel good about coming home or, you know, to their town.
Anybody else?
I can say from planning and zoning perspective, the planning and zoning board had speakers come in and talk to us, and you were on planning and zoning then. We had William Waters from Lake Worth Beach speak to us. He's an architect and a designer and helped design the house over on Olympus. We had architect Rick Gonzalez speak to us. And one of the things that they both pointed out in our codes were undefined terms. So we already, we had the harmony section in our appearance review, but we didn't have definitions for those terms. So, and, so we needed to make them measurable, and it seems that we're still working on that.
And why?
The why was for slow incremental growth. We wanted to preserve what makes Juno Beach special. And the building site area regulations weren't getting us there. The examples that Leslie Thomas again gave in her January presentation where she showed that Italian castle on Mars, that 6,000 square feet next to a 1,000-square-foot house, you know, it's just you can't really tell where the 25% landscaping is, you just don't see anything that, anyway, not just that, but then also on Juno Lane, the 6,000-square-foot house that, I think in gross square footage, it's like 0.8 floor area ratio, it's just, it overwhelms the other houses next to it, and it's, and so we needed something that was measurable in order to have incremental growth.
Want to add anything?
I do, because, you know, what I felt is this was a train that just started going down the track, didn't stop. And I don't believe that anybody had any indication that this was going to take away property rights from individuals. It wasn't discussed.
Can we use the term max square footage? Don't get max square footage.
Can I, can I finish?
Is...
Can I finish? Diana? Diane, sorry. You know, and it's, to look back and say, okay, when we defined the word, that's what we did, you know, that's what we did, that's all we did. We didn't say, okay, so bulk, mass, scale. In fact, that didn't come about, Frank. We didn't start applying that immediately. This was kind of a work in progress after we defined the word, and then we started trying to figure out what we were doing with it. So it was all kind of just, you know, something that started hitting us. All of a sudden, we're getting applications, and Frank is denying the applications because we defined a word, and we're all going, what the heck's going on here? You know, why are we denying all these applications? And it's because of those words. But, you know, it's the same thing. I don't think anyone, any 10 people, maybe a couple did, but...
So is anybody in favor of keeping the ordinance? Does anybody like ordinance 580 or 780, whatever it is?
No, if there's a motion on the table, I'd be making a motion right now.
I think we should keep, I think we should keep it and define the terms so it makes sense.
You'd like to change, you'd like to make a change to it.
Well, I want the terms to be measurable, just like we said at the workshop. And we really do need to look at the houses that have been approved. There's at least five houses that were approved, three stories with a tower, they're all two stories, at least two stories, two stories with a tower. And that's your, that's a presentation in your, in your packet, the renderings of those homes. So what has actually happened with this code, I don't think is the fears that I hear from the audience, because the houses are still large with second stories and with the tower. And the way we have to define the terms now, it's not the incremental growth that I had hoped for, but you pretty much jumped to the largest house. But there is some consideration of the mass and scale and where you are in your neighborhood. So I do think we need to keep this code, but we need to make the terms more measurable so they're easier to apply.
Okay, so should we all agree it's either got to be changed or ditched? And nobody wants to keep it as is, right?
Well, I think we could keep the terms as they are, but the guidance that, like the guidance that we just got at the workshop, that could be refined. We don't have to change the terms in the code because that could bite us on Senate Bill 180. But we need to change the guidance as how to apply it.
So my next question is, if we, if we can't agree on exactly what changes to make, are we okay with how the staff is implementing the ordinance right now? The process that staff notified us at the workshop, are we happy with that? Step, you know, step one, step two, or test one, test two? Are we happy with that or we're not happy with that?
I'm not happy, I'm not happy with it.
It's better than nothing. It's better than not having that ordinance in place.
How do you feel, John? What are your thoughts? Instead of asking the questions, I'll ask you.
You know, I'm not happy with it. I don't think there's any basis in code for it, but I just want to know if you all like it.
We need a tangible, more tangible measurement.
But that's the crux of the matter.
Yeah, okay.
Could you suggest how to measure it? Give me a ratio, give me a proportion, do something. Just don't say we should do it.
Well, I'm not, well, that's staff's job to come up with those calculations. It's not my job, I'm not a mathematician.
But why have to do that at all? What's the purpose of doing that? Why?
Harmony.
No, no, it's not harmony because our base codes have harmony. So what is the purpose? You want smaller houses in town, that's the purpose. You don't want...
No, that's, that's not, nobody here said that. Nobody here said we want smaller houses.
Explain it. Explain how this does not allow, take away that right and they have to build smaller houses. What do you, you want, you don't want smaller houses, Dee Dee?
No.
What do you want?
I want another workshop that's actually a workshop so we can work through these things, because everything that, it's happening here, John's questions, this really should have been in the context of a workshop with a moderator to walk us through some of these things, to walk us through the scenarios. Aldo Rivera was completely right. That wasn't a workshop, it was just a council meeting where we hashed things out and everybody complained to each other. So we're going in circles because we want, we want it to change, we want something smart, and we're not there yet. And I'm just, you know, asking for an actual workshop where we can work through some scenarios. My constituents, the neighbors, whatever you want to call them, the residents, there's obviously different factions and different opinions. Some people want to preserve the charm and character which they associate with houses that are more, you know, whatever you, terms you want to use, finestrations, articulations, whatever those features are. They want something that's visually different, visually unique, but not so massive like you're living next to a shopping mall. So, so, excuse me, but, so what I'm hearing from people is, obviously, on one hand, nobody wants property rights and values to change or be decreased, which I don't think is going to be a problem. But the other thing is people who want to live in the smaller homes want to be respected. And I think we need to find that balance between respect on both sides. And how we do that through the calculations, I don't know. That's for staff and our professionals to do.
Hang on, Mary Ann.
So, so I'm not, nobody is, nobody I've talked to says, oh, the houses have to be smaller, we can only be a small house town. I think it's about the architecture and the proximity is a big issue.
So what if we sent this back to staff to find a way to accommodate both sides?
That's ideal. That would be absolutely perfect. And I don't know that we're going to achieve that tonight, and I think we're only going to, you know, get frustrated. I mean, let's bring back some other solutions. And one question I would have for Len or staff, because the current thing isn't perfect, I'm, I don't think it's effective to just throw it out. I mean, how do you do a zoning in progress? And can we implement that so that we can just make changes?
I'm going to let Rob talk here in a second, and he can maybe guide us a little bit better. But Mary Ann, you wanted to say something?
I don't understand quite. You said you're not happy with it. John Calligan said he's not happy with it. I'm not happy with it. Diana is somehow in between. You are happy with it. I mean, there are three people who are unhappy. What are we talking about?
We have, we could do a motion if someone wanted to make a motion, or, but we have a motion on the table, so...
Let's not plan another workshop. I mean, because that will be just the first of many more to come.
Okay, so hang on.
And meanwhile, the people who are building houses are waiting, like they're waiting for the bench, they wait for the gazebo, they're waiting. This is a waiting game.
We've got a motion on the table. I'm going to go ahead and see if that fails or...
What was the motion? Would you please?
The motion on the table was to keep architectural review for single-family homes as described in 34-116, per in B31.
Yes.
We haven't even discussed that.
Okay, I would like to start that discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Len gave, sorry. Len gave us an opinion that we could be subject to a challenge if we keep our architectural review, we turn somebody down because it doesn't meet our architectural standards, they challenge, and it goes to court. Right, Len? Am I saying it right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Now, what happens when it goes to court?
It's, it's just an appeal, and I, this is what I believe Diana was trying to explain before. It would just be a basis for them to challenge the denial through a petition for writ of certiorari.
Are we likely to win or lose? Len?
That's, I don't know. If you're asking me for my gut opinion, I think we could lose. But we could win, and I've won cases that I should have lost, and I, you know, like, it's just, anytime you go to court, John, you're, the control is out of your hands.
I understand that.
So you could lose.
The legislature says we cannot regulate building design elements, right? The reason that staff told us they're not having, they're not, they're not opining or having the planning board opine on architectural standards is because Frank said without using building design elements, it's impossible. So if we're going to maintain architectural standards, according to Frank, we have to, we have to regulate building design elements, which flies in the face of the legislature. Or am I wrong, Frank?
Can I explain? Can I explain? The memo that we got from Len Rubin on page six, it says the board could continue to have final decision authority, and any person seeking to challenge the board's determination would have to file a petition writ of certiorari in the circuit court. So, but this is on, this is, this whole memo is an analysis of that 163 building design elements.
Right.
And the legal theory that we can continue to regulate building design elements is that our planning and zoning staff and our board was given appearance review in 34-28, and we've had that since before those dates in the building design review section of 163.
Okay, so here's what happens. We lose in court, right? It goes to court, we lose in court, and the judge says, you cannot regulate for this person, you have to make a settlement with them, okay?
This is a different kind of case that...
Yeah, it's a different, this one just, they would quash the denial and it would have to come back, but they could say, you can't do that. They could say that. So when it comes back, you cannot regulate building design elements.
They could say, we're challenging your setback, you know, or we're challenging your height, or we're challenging any of those, and the judge can always say, bad decision.
But Diana, with all due respect, I think we should be posing these questions to the attorney. You know, I know Diana's got, you know...
My question to Len is, the process, that the judge says you were wrong to deny this person on the basis of architectural standards, then what happens?
Then it comes back, and we would have to have another hearing where we did not apply those standards. So essentially, the order that, so under your scenario, we deny somebody for architecture, they appeal, we lose.
Right.
And the judge says, you cannot regulate building design elements. It would come back for another hearing before the board, and they could not regulate building design elements. But also, that would act as precedent going forward, and we would be done.
Well, that's my next question.
Building design element.
Question. The first question is, when it comes back, we pretty much have to let them do what they wanted to do?
We could not regulate, right, as far as architecture or... As far as architecture or building design elements, correct.
Okay. Now, my next follow-up question, then the next person comes in with the same situation, we, we deny him again, does it go to court again?
Well, I don't, I don't, I think if we lost the first time, I would not do it again.
Okay, so if.
I would be done with that.
If that's a scenario, where, how are we ahead? If that's a scenario, we're, we are, we didn't gain anything. They get to build whatever they wanted to build and we just spent legal fees. If, if that's, if that's how it plays out.
All right, then I'm going to.
Can I?
No, Diana, wait, hang on. Dee Dee, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I'd say, then I'll, I'll just withdraw my second on that. Can I withdraw my second since they seconded the motion or we have to just go through the vote?
I believe only the original can withdraw the motion.
Okay.
I'll withdraw the motion at this time, but I, I would like to respond to, to John. Architectural review is, it, we've had it for a really long time. Frank has that beautiful memo of the different styles.
Yeah.
It's integral to who we are as Juno Beach. It's going to be part of our master plan that we've already have going down the road. Why would we voluntarily take it away if the statute language is vague? If our attorney says it's permissive to keep it? And why, why wouldn't we just go forward with it? Because then we can have our design book and we could do those things we want to do. And I appreciate Rob giving the option for a carrot instead of a stick, but that carrot is going to be a taller building, more density, you know, less setbacks. It's, it's, it's not going to be easy things for the, for people in the town to accept. Oh, and I don't even know if we can do that because in our charter, it says if you go above the highest height or the most density, you need all five council members. So, I mean, it would be a struggle. So if we keep architectural in place, then we wouldn't have to go through those gymnastics.
So, John, if I may, just for a second, I, I disagree with you, Diana. And, and I know that Len, when you made that statement, you said we had it before twenty-twenty. But what you're counting on is that staff was the board. And I think that's a bad decision. I'm sorry, Diana, let me finish, thank you.
Okay, you're over.
I think that that's, that's going to be debated, um, in my opinion. Now, I'm not an attorney, but if I was a regular citizen and somebody said, okay, did you have this architectural board in place? And we say, well, no, we didn't have it in place until what, twenty-twenty-one, Len, I think? Twenty-twenty-one, it has to be.
Yeah, it was after the.
Yeah. It has to be before twenty-twenty. And then we say as a town, oh, no, our staff was doing it, they were our board. And they're to go, no, 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 no. Your staff is not an architectural board. That's what I would fight and I'm not even an attorney and I would fight you guys on that wholeheartedly. Because you can't, you know, that's like saying, and I, I don't know, Steph agrees with, I mean, I don't think you guys considered yourself a board. You do this on a day-to-day basis.
That's not the argument.
No, they're not a board.
Yeah.
That's, anyway. It's not the argument, it's, is, is that our planning and zoning board, under their duties, they were assigned appearance review from the very beginning. And even in Len's memo, he says that the legislative history has the city of St. Petersburg and they're the same, that they anticipated different cities having different, uh, you can probably explain this better, but anyways, in the legislative history, other towns that are like us, that aren't voluntarily giving up their architecture review, but they're moving forward with it even with the statute in place.
And Diana, I'm going to disagree with you on that. I think that said something entirely different. I don't have that note with me, but.
I gave them, I gave you the memo.
Yeah, no, that's what the memo said. And, and in all honesty, when I first wrote that memo, I was really thinking, I was going to say, we could not do it anymore, the architectural review, because we did not have a board reviewing that in place prior to the date set by the legislature. What threw me off was the legislature's reference to the city of St. Petersburg in there. And I think they just, I don't know how carefully they thought that through. They just gave two examples, like, and they, I, I think they just Googled or went through, I don't know what they did. But, so one of them was a real architecture review board where you have design professionals on the board and that's how they're selected. Many of the cities in South Florida have those and have had them for many years. But then they sort of chose the city of St. Petersburg, who didn't really ever do that. It was sort of, they kind of did it the same way we did. Personally, I think it was just a little laziness on the part of the legislature that they didn't really look through the duties because I couldn't figure it out until I actually called the city attorney's office and I asked the, I finally had to find the city attorney that was in charge of their land use. And he's like, oh, yeah, well, yeah, we didn't really do that, but, oh, you know, did they? And he was unaware that they had used them as an example. He's like, oh, they're using us an example? Like, it was a kind of a complete shock to him. So based on the fact, because when you're interpreting a statute, you first look to the plain language. The plain language, I think, kind of falls the other way, but then, you know, they don't define the term. So then you look at the legislative history and the legislative history, I think, was just a little sloppy. It was in a footnote where they had two examples. One was Wellington, which is an actual architecture review board that they have design colors, palettes, all that kind of stuff. And then the other one was St. Pete that really doesn't have that, but, you know. So that's the explanation. So when I first did it, I really thought I was going to come out solidly, no, we can't do it. But then when I went through the legislative history, I'm like, well, I guess, you know, there's an argument and the fact that the legislature included St. Pete. So I think it's the greatest argument, no. But there's an argument. I mean, there's a legal argument to be made.
And Diana, and, and by the way, call, call me John, don't call me Vice Mayor Calligan. It's too much, it's too many words. I don't know what you want me to call you. I'll call you mayor because you're running the meeting, it's, that's a little different.
So what do you want to say?
I just wanted to, what's that?
I'm listening.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say, it's a long shot. I, I know, I, I know, I understand what you're trying to say, there's a possibility, but I think it's a slim possibility. And our time is better working on something that is more practical to implement, to try to achieve what we're trying to achieve two years ago. And it's not this long shot that we're likely to lose and right back to where we started. It's, it's some of what the staff recommended. You know, in our memorandum, there are things that we can look at to, um, you know, get us there to some of the things we talked about, that how people feel about, um, you know, bigger houses, um, the, the impression they get that they're not being, uh, you know, listened to, um, things like that. And that, that, that we're losing what makes us special. We can go to work on that and that's what I think we should talk about, that's tonight. We don't need a workshop. Workshop the death on us.
I, I, I agree with, with John, I, I, not the Vice Mayor, I agree with John, that I, I think that that makes sense. And I, I think that what we have here is a good start. My, my question, my concern is, are there other tools? Could we do this different? Can we do it better? Is, is this what we have in front of us, the best we're going to get in terms of a compromise that honors the people who were concerned about their rights and, you know, their values? And also respecting other homeowners, you know, who have, who have their quality of life issues or their concerns about their rights to maintain, you know, their, their property values as well? Because some people do feel that their property values are diminished when extremely large or, or, I shouldn't even use the word large, but a bulk mass of a house goes in next to them or behind them and does that diminish their value? So what are your thoughts on this? I mean, you, I want to know your thoughts on it.
The setbacks are a good way to look at it.
Okay.
Now, if, and, and on top of the setbacks, an incentive program that if, if, if builders would utilize the architectural booklet or, or the design review booklet, that there would be, um, you know, incentives for doing that.
Okay. So maybe Rob could just tell us, what, when you talk about incentives, what do you, can you be very specific what those incentives may be? So that I can really frame it well?
The incentives could take a wide variety of types and natures. And I think we need to see the booklet and, and how we would organize a suite of them that someone might be.
But get, throw out an example, maybe Frank, I mean, what?
It could be extra square footage. It could be a reduced setback. It could be a number of different things that, uh, the town is willing to accept as a bargaining chip for getting what they believe would be a better outcome. We've have at least one example of a large home on a lot that people might otherwise find offensive, but because of its architectural design and its landscaping, everyone keeps citing that property, I'm not sure which address it is, as an example of, wow, that's a big house. But because of its design and the way the lot is landscaped, it's not nearly as intrusive to adjacent property owners as other examples are. So I think what you would do is you would look at examples like that and say, what makes them less offensive? And then incent those kinds of, of improvements. So that is not something that we would have an immediate answer to. That's not a, you know, tomorrow we can start doing a zoning in progress for that concept because we'd have to do the design manual. And as we're doing that, the firm that we would be engaging to facilitate that would be aware of the fact that we're trying to build incentives. They would do a best practices survey of similar incentives elsewhere and return those to council for consideration along with what they perceive to be or would project to be the outcomes associated with those kinds of incentives being offered. Because of course, people will be concerned, oh, it's more square footage or it's more this or that. But yeah, it, it's, it's a dance, right? You, you're trying to induce someone to do things that you want for the community from an architectural and design perspective against a backdrop of a state that's telling you, you can't do that. So that, how do you get what you want to get with a statutory preemption? Well, you incentivize it instead of mandate it. And to get that, you have to give up a little bit sometimes because it's not, you know, a, a one-sided discussion at that juncture.
So who is the arbiter then of that? Who decides whether that incentive should be granted or not? Is, is that a checklist that then we have a book? And, and if you do this, you get that? If you do this, you get that?
It would be very clear.
So it doesn't go to the planning zoning board, it doesn't go to council, it's something staff has a checklist and can make those exchanges because we codify that we're going to accept those trade-offs.
That would be the preferred, that would be the preferred.
Is that the method, yeah?
I, I think that would be the preferred method. You'd, you'd have to, and a lot of people do this in their landscape code. Like, so if you have a certain number of points, you know, then you get other incentives. So yeah, it would be like if, if five of these things are met, you get this, this, you know, sort of menu.
And, and you can bring us examples of, of that as a menu of choices that are typical for municipalities who are trying to achieve harmony through this kind of.
The, the expectation would be in combination with development of the design manual, we would alert that same company that we want to have a suite of alternatives available to induce or incentivize, rather, adoption of the concepts that are in there based on a framework that is clear, it's fair and it's produces certainty in the development process. Because they know if I do these things that are in this design book that the town of Juno Beach would like for me to do and it results in a better product, I will get this incentive that is promised me. And they can plan accordingly and they can pay their arc design professionals to produce those plans with the expectation that they will be able to avail themselves of that additional incentive because they're doing the right thing. The right thing as we define it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I wonder if there's a reason to incentivize them if we just start with, we've got this design book we'd like you to follow. So you don't actually have to incentivize them and possibly in any fashion as well. Because maybe a lot of people want to live here and they want to just do what we'd like them to do within our design book and our, our landscape, um, book. Right?
I have a question. On page one forty-three, it says here, propose council directions. And it gives us certain directions for amendments. Did anybody read them or did you consider them worthwhile? Uh, Frank, is that what the planning and zoning, uh, I mean, the P and, your department? Is, is that what you recommend? I would like to talk about this.
You mean one thirty-four?
Yeah. On page one thirty-four, where it says, propose council directions. I would like to talk about these.
There's, they're pretty involved, so we're going to let, I'm going to let, yeah, Frank and, yeah.
Just to answer that quickly.
What did you say, Rob?
Let Frank go ahead and speak. I, I actually had a few comments I thought might be helpful, but let's let Frank respond and we'll go from there.
Yes, this were the proposed council directions if we were to implement the options A, B, C, D, um, that were planted in the, in the memorandum.
Yeah.
But these are step by step what we would have to do next so that everybody is aware, uh, you know, step by step.
Now, I have a question. Does that mean we would repeal ordinance seven eighty?
It, it would go back to staff review, correct? And we would not.
I mean, the first step would be the council repeals that ordinance. And then the second step would be we would, uh, look at these proposals or what? I just find, get channel towards.
Harmony, it removes the planning and zoning board from, from review in harmony. It incorporates these tools into the base zoning, which is still continued to be harmony for that specific zoning district. It's just that now your definitions of mass, bulk, landscaping orientation, scale, portion, all of those are not taken into consideration now. Now we're looking at base zoning plus these other tools that we're recommending.
Well, I read them and, uh, I, I like them. And, uh, in order to get something done, could we, could I just make a motion now before there was a motion made and, yeah?
Let, let me just throw something else out there, the cost of the pattern book. So, um, I did hear back from, um, Chenmore and Associates, they did something very similar for the village of Tequesta.
Yeah.
And then Kimley Horn, um, that also looked at it, these are bulk part figures. But, um, Tequesta paid seventy-five thousand dollars for theirs. And Kimley Horn was around seventy to eighty thousand, seventy-five thousand. And this would be of course custom to Juno Beach. We're not talking about, you know, uh, copy and pasting images. It, it would be the whole thing for the pattern book, so.
That book is included here, right? Or not?
That, that would, that was one of our recommendations, that was option D, correct? Just.
Well, the money we save on the lawsuits, we can spend on the pattern book.
There's going to be lawsuits either way.
And, and I will say, when we did the architectural share, that was one of the recommendations from the consultants as well.
And that was when we had architectural review authority. It was, wasn't to give away your architectural review authority. One, one thing I would like clarified, you keep saying that harmony stays in the code. Frank, this question for you. But in harmony, uh, this harmony, this part of our appearance review, that goes away. So you're saying it's harmony because it's the size of the square foot, it's a setback, it's just not the terms that we have in harmony in our appearance review. So when you say there's still harmony in the code, I'm confused because it's not the same harmony.
As somebody mentioned before, when John in nineteen ninety-two implemented this.
Yeah.
The harmony was in the code since nineteen ninety-two. It was mentioned in there. It's just that at that time, it was reviewed through base zoning.
Oh, can you show us that then? Where it is for RS one, RS two, RS three, so I could compare the language? Before we voted out, I want to be able to compare the language.
That's when they started doing site plan for, uh, they actually just added site plan to the code in general. So it applied to the projects. And it, I believe that at that time, it was that one sentence, you know, shall be in harmony with the neighboring area.
That's, that's what we're going to get, harmony in the neighboring area and not the definite.
Well, you're, you're getting these options that, if you say yes, these options that we're proposing, add it to, in addition to the existing seven that we're currently doing. You're going to get the setback, you're going to get the floor air ratio, whatever comes out of the landscape and this pattern book. Those are the additional tools that you would be getting.
Can I ask a question? I, I, what bearing does this have on the housing element of the comprehensive plan? Which.
I'm sorry, that, that section that you referred to was the.
It's, it's like, um.
To the maximum impact capable.
You know, it talks about, it reflects the styles indigenous to Juno Beach. So if we can't do architectural review, how, and how does all of this impact the comprehensive plan? Do we need to rewrite this then?
Is that specific, well, we would have to take a closer look at it to see if it's just.
So for instance, objective.
Homes. Because if it's not, we're still doing it for other projects. So again.
I believe it's just a general statement.
It's a general statement, could potentially stay there because we're still doing this for other projects.
Because objective two, for instance, it says promote residential design that complements and is in concert with efficient provision of, well, that's community facilities. Broad range, provide a broad range of housing types and styles which encourage clustered developments. Maintain integrity of that inventory. And then, but then in the goal, it talks about styles indigenous to Juno Beach. Anyway.
This before projects such as the seven hundred, although it's a single family home, it's still a planned unit development. So we can still enforce that in there. And then also the same thing with, um, Polte. It's residential, but it's a planned unit development, townhomes. So they have to meet that standard of the architectural style.
But does this, if we adopted it? But does this, if we adopted, it doesn't supersede or bump out of the way the comp plan?
Rob, do you want to go ahead and, sorry?
Any changes that we make, we have to make sure that we're abiding by the comp plan. But just what you read, I think we're good. I mean.
Well, I didn't read it all.
No, we would do it.
I won't.
For the research.
No, we would. It stopped the code, but DeeDee was reading from the comp plan.
Rob is gonna make a couple of statements, I think.
I just wanted to kind of refocus just slightly. We've covered an awful lot of ground tonight, and I really appreciate members of the public that are still here listening to our conversation and everyone who participated and has left. Everyone has a valid perspective, and I, and we all understand, council and staff, what an important issue this is for the town of Juno Beach. But just to kind of refocus on the topic that's in front of council right now, I think it's important to, one, recognize where, how we got to where we are tonight, at least since I've been here. And one of the issues that we had is, it came to light pretty quick since my arrival, that this language that's in the appearance review isn't being applied as it's written. And the reason it is not is because we can't. So it's broken and absolutely must be fixed. We said this at our workshop, and there were a lot of comments surrounding that. But, but this nugget of truth has seemed to gotten lost in, in a lot of different aspects of the conversation. So I want to make sure, as council continues their deliberations, that they don't forget this piece of it because it's quite important. So many of our council members have highlighted and even included commentary about individuals who attended or attended prior meetings, saying, we don't have metrics associated with setback, scale, mass, bulk, proportion, overall height, orientation, so on and so forth. All of these dimensions that are thought to cultivate harmony in the community. And that's true. What happened with our staff is they were backed into a corner with these words, all of which require some further definition to be able to apply fairly, simply, and consistently. What we're doing is not any of those things. It's complex, it is obscure to the point where not even our council was aware of how staff was applying these terms to actual land use applications coming in the door. So from a town manager's perspective, that was of significant concern to me. And not wanting to really alienate any viewpoint on this question, in terms of operational needs, we have to fix it because we have to be able to do our jobs. So I spoke with staff, and, and they told me how they were doing it. The ironic part of those mechanics that were described at the workshop is that the people who are of the save Juno Beach, save Juno Beach philosophy didn't even realize that the rules we were applying were encouraging the smallest house within that 300 foot range to become 1,200 square feet or more, bigger than the biggest house automatically. So this concept that the language in appearance review is somehow protecting or shielding us from rapid change is just a fallacy. The mechanics of it are just the opposite. It is not incremental, it happens quickly. Now, on the property rights side of the equation, it's reasonable to expect that one would be able to submit a land use application and have an expectation that those plans would be approved, provided your design professional approved or reviewed the code and presented plans in accordance with them. Right now, they can't do that. And that's, that's patently unfair to anyone who owns property, question of whether we should increase the setbacks or decrease the amount of square footage aside. So again, what I'm saying there is the imperative is, we must do something, we can't do nothing. And so here we are. From the last workshop, staff, our consensus direction to staff was, do the best practices research on what other communities are doing to respond to this problem of perceived houses that are too big, or supersized, or McMansions, or any of those labels that have been used across the nation. They did that research. In consultation with our legal counsel, however, we did receive some caution about using many of those tools and techniques. So this discussion tonight about exploring those same techniques is going to yield the same result in the final analysis because it is not a case of where our staff did not look at them. They did. The problem being, those suite of tools and regulations that are sometimes used in other jurisdictions where they don't have the statutory constraints that we have, will impede the amount of square footage that a particular building can be. And to the point where our legal counsel expressed concern that we would run into potential Burt Harris claim problems. So what you see on page 133, starting with item A, is Frank's team's best efforts to be responsive to council, be responsive to the community, and adhere to the guidance that we're hearing from our legal counsel, and still at the same time, advance some recommendations. So A and B are two such recommendations that legal counsel felt were minimally intrusive to the point where they would not necessarily create a successful Burt Harris claim, but at the same time, be responsive to council's direction to identify metrics to use. And A, the setback on second stories, addresses this question of a vertical wall at the lot line. So they said five feet in. And if a person doesn't want to go five feet in because there is a construction cost associated with that, you have some structural work that you have to do to put a wall five feet in on top of a lower wall, then they can move the whole building in another five feet and still have a vertical wall. So, so that option would exist. That was the purpose of A, is to deal with that vertical wall right at the minimum setback that our current base zoning allows. On B, the floor area limit, was to help decrease the overall size of the second floor, but not do it to an extreme point to where it would constitute a concern from legal counsel about Burt Harris, but still at the same time, work to shave down the overall bulk of that building. So that one just says, the second story can only be 75% of the first story. Now, from a property rights perspective, someone might still express concern that I'm losing square footage there. But our council direction was bring the metrics back. So therefore, we brought the metrics back in, in a manner consistent with the council consensus at the time. So that's A and B. Now, C is something that we have a consultant already working on, and that wouldn't be immediately implemented, but it could also help address this issue because it would increase the landscaping and maybe even consider a change in the definition of landscaping. So what landscaping is there really looks like greenery instead of rots and concrete or whatever the case may be. And we talked a little bit about design review already. So the decision that's really in front of council is fourfold. It's, one, accept all the proportion of these recommendations that staff have. Two, go back to the drawing board and study some more. But I would argue that staff studied an awful lot already and looked at a lot of different tools and techniques. But if we eat too much into square footage, which most of those are going to do, we're going to run into potential Burt Harris claims according by two legal councils, so don't go there. I don't imagine that direction is changing, so to tell staff to go back and do the same thing we already did probably is not going to result in a productive use of our staff time or dollars if we have to hire a consultant to do the same thing that we've already done. Then number three would be revert to base zoning. You know, this, this idea that harmony does not exist in base zoning is not accurate because harmony is implied in the concept of zoning since its inception in like 1929. The reason zoning exists is to promote this concept of like uses and harmony within zone districts and all of those kinds of things. You may never see the word harmony if you go back and research zoning all the way back to 1929, but if you have something like Rock, you know, some, some AI that does a pretty good job of scraping everything that humanity has managed to assemble online, it's going to tell you that harmony is implicit in the concept of base zoning. So then it becomes a question of, do you have the right zoning requirements in place to cultivate the outcomes that you're looking for? And that's what A through D does, in staff's opinion, taking into account legal council's direction to not go too far or risk Burt Harris claims. So really, the other fourth option would be, just continue to do what you've been doing. But if we could keep doing what we're doing, this, this idea that we're comparing houses to others does not exist. It's not happening. There is no one that's using the language in the harmony code right now to contextually say, architecturally, that building A next door is like building B. Because if we did that, people like John Staluto would not be able to do a second story addition because the houses around his house are single story. And if we did the preponderance language that is in harmony, it would preclude him from doing that. So staff are not currently doing that. And anyone who is representing that those terms are being applied within the construct of reviewing a development application is not representing the facts correctly. Because staff explained at the workshop exactly how they're implementing harmony. And it's that whole series of math, ranges and averages, and the end outcome of that, just so everyone is clear, is that the smallest house within the 300 foot range will be allowed to get bigger than the biggest house. And the idea of incremental growth over time that we've heard discussed tonight does not become a reality until every house in the 300 feet is bigger than the biggest house. That's when the foot is taken off of the accelerator and incremental growth begins. Now, I don't believe that's consistent with any of this conversation I've heard about what people thought they were going to get when they were embracing harmony. Harmony as a concept in municipal planning, land use planning, and community affairs is mom and apple pie. Everybody wants harmony. That's why zoning itself embraces it and tries to advance it. But making that happen, you know, taking all the bits of the recipe and cooking the, the award winning cake is a real problem because not everyone can build an award winning cake, and there's all kinds of factors involved. So, so the issue here, in my, in my view, at least in terms of what we're asking council to do, is tell us what you want us to do tomorrow. And if we have A through D that's agreeable, then we can proceed with that, and we might even have zoning in progress to facilitate that. I would argue, don't ask us to restudy what we've already studied unless there's a change in what our legal council advice is. Legal council seems pretty clear. Architecture review is gone, at least from a staff understanding of what we're hearing. So that is all gone from the appearance review. And there are other parts of appearance review, which are in like part two, all of this, all of those words in there, many of them relate to architecture, and we're not actually doing them and haven't been doing them. So it's erroneous to suggest we have been. And the rest of them need metrics. And that's what A through D does because we can't push the metrics any further than what A through D present to council. So it's a tough decision to be in. It's not an impossible one because there's some ways to help incent some of the architectural design stuff we want, but that's going to take a little time. And, and it's tough to make this kind of decision because, you know, there, there's a lot of strong viewpoints and perspectives, all of which have merit. But we have this, this elephant in the room, which is, the state of Florida is telling us what we can and can't do, and they preempted our authority.
That's what his memo says. That's not what he's.
But.
Diana, let him.
We have to listen to what Len is saying in person and quit trying to reinterpret his memo because he's saying here in person what he meant in his memo. So, so let's listen to what Len says and let him speak for his own memo.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, wait a second, Diana. I think what we need to do is we need to get some motions going here and what we're gonna do.
Take a break. Can we take a break? I need a break. I need a break. I gotta go to the bathroom.
Okay.
I agree.
What, motions or break?
But I like to, I like to make a motion.
Well, we've got, we've got people that want to take a break, so we'll give them a break.
No, I just want.
The meeting's read adjourned. So I was just talking to Len a little bit about motions, and, you know, we have to discuss them. I'm not saying that this is the way we're going to go, but there's a couple of things we can do. We could repeal 780. We can go ahead and remove architecture review, but the repeal of 780, since there's at least three of us that are not happy with that code, and DeeDee, I'm not sure how you actually feel about it, but Len, do you want to explain what happened here? Because it sounds like 780 was put in there, and it actually affects our commercial.
Well, it affects everything. And Frank can correct me if he thinks I'm wrong, but it was incorporated into appearance review. So that harmony, which is B2 in that section, applies to everything. So if you repeal 780, you're repealing all that language about, you know, bulk, setback scale, mass, bulk proportion, height orientation. And then you're also repealing the 300 feet, which I know nobody's happy with right now, which maybe. But if you repeal 780, that would be gone for all appearance review. Single-family, multifamily, commercial, the harmony part.
But that was never there as of January of 2024. That was implemented just in final.
Right. That was, what, 2023 or 2024?
24.
24.
Okay, so knowing that commercial is actually affected by this too, that could be a bigger lawsuit for us. They find out that their ability to build, it could be, that could be taken away.
We have the moratorium, so is it a moot point?
Well, it is. Well, yeah, because they can't build for now, but we still probably should remove that just from that fact alone, that none of us knew that we were putting it in and implementing it into the commercial and multifamily and every other section of town. So does anyone want to make a motion to repeal 780?
I would make the motion.
Okay.
I want discussion.
We need a second first. If no, is anyone going to second?
I would like.
Or I'll second. I'll pass the gavel and I'll second. Okay, now Diana, do you want to speak?
Yes. I think it's really important that we don't take any actions until we find out whether the governor is going to sign Senate Bill 180. Because Senate Bill 180 will change the landscape code. It takes us back to August 2024, and then we can't make changes to our code if it stays the same way until October 2027. So I think unless we know where Senate Bill 180 is going to go, that we should stay status quo for now. And the status quo for now could be keep exploring these options and looking at things that are definable. But while we're doing status quo, we could get the legal memo from Lynn Rubin that was referenced by Frank Davila in his memo that said that anything less than max square footage is going to be a problem. And we can evaluate that memo and determine what our risks are. And I understand from Emily that we do have insurance against Burt Harris-type claims, but we could look at that risk and try to understand that risk a little bit more.
So the insurance, I can give you a little more clarification that we have $300,000 worth of coverage for Burt Harris' claims per year. So I just want to make sure that.
Well, we haven't defined what that risk is, and so it is worth looking at defining that risk, you know, whether we, you know, stay status quo or not. But by staying status quo, we're, houses have been approved under the mechanism that was suggested. And it might not be the mechanism, that's the incremental growth mechanism, but it is houses that are three stories, they're large. It doesn't appear to be taking away people's square footage based on the way that it's being proposed.
I think we need to move forward, and we need, I think we need to move forward. I know we've heard this before, Diana, and I appreciate it, but we keep, you know, reiterating the same thing. Diana, wait. Stop a minute, please. Stop, just stop.
We're in discussion.
No, wait a second. Because we've done this before. You've gone through this, and you're reiterating the same thing, and we do have to get through the rest of the meeting, so.
I'd like to show some of these houses that have been approved under our.
I think you have shown them, and I think we've seen all of those. So we need to continue to move on, please.
Things have been moving forward with the staff. This is an addition on a home, and we've got the.
Diane, I'm going to say, please stop right now. We need to move forward with some decisions, okay? We've seen that the last time. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Well, I would like to.
Diane, stop, just stop. We're going to move forward with a decision, okay?
Can I get a consensus to have Lynn Rubin bring the memo on Burt Harris that was relied upon for the staff memo in this instance?
No, we're not.
There's no memo.
I'm sick of terrorists.
Create a memo.
We are moving forward. We've got to decide on ordinance 780, please.
Can I get a consensus? Does anybody agree that we want to look at the legal opinion that described?
Diane, we're talking, can you just, hold on, just sit back for a second and relax. We need to talk about repealing 780 if we're going to do that.
There's a motion on the table. This is a discussion, and you told me it was.
But that's on a different topic, so that's out of order.
No, this is the.
The Burt Harris Act is.
Maybe that's a problem and why people didn't understand what I was saying. The memo that Frank gave us for today, where we had the bullets, and one of the bullets is repealing 780, or it's dealing with harmony. It's whether you can actually do less than the max square footage, and that could potentially be a Burt Harris claim. And those risks really haven't been identified, in my mind, and quantified. So I think that we should have an opportunity to look at those risks.
Now, I am not agreeing to that. I think we have to move on. I think we know there's a risk for the Burt Harris Act, and, you know, we could go through.
Cases that are similar for the size scale. I mean, we should look at cases that address these size issues.
Diane, I would like to speak on this.
Sure.
I'm against repealing ordinance 780 right now until we know the direction we're going on other things. So I'm with you on that. But we can still talk about that memo, you know, down the road. But that's where I stand.
That's helpful.
I do not want to repeal unless we have something to replace it with.
Okay, so then the next decision we need to make is about.
Well, you have a motion on the floor, so unless you want to withdraw the motion.
Well, if we've got a consensus that no one wants to move forward with that, do we need to finish?
Well, either need to vote on it or withdraw it.
Do you want to finish the motion, Mary Ann?
I don't.
Okay, well, let's just do a roll call on it.
Do a roll call.
Yeah.
Councilmember Halpern?
Nay.
Can you restate the motion? Oh, to repeal.
To repeal.
780.
780.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Proton Davis?
Repeal. I mean, nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Nay.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion fails three to two.
Okay, so the next decision we need to make is, Len, guide us through on this, since it is, you know, we've got such a big gob of stuff sitting here in these six bullets. Do we need to do a motion on architectural review?
I think you should do a motion on architecture review, although, you know, we've already received consensus to move forward, but if you want to.
I would like to make a motion.
I have a question, if I may.
Okay, well.
Before we proceed, I just, it's sort of procedural, so.
Hang on, we were talking about architecture review. Is it based on that, DeeDee? If not, then I want to let John make a motion.
It's based on the whole thing, sort of, so I just.
Well, I think we need to take them in section. So, John, go ahead if you want to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt the proposed council direction outline the staff memo, including item A, B, C, and D.
Could we have, oh, it's not discussion.
I would second that.
All right, and for discussion on that, John, I just want to make sure you're aware that A and B, or anybody else on council, that does still take away property rights. It takes, it is going to affect them. That was where Frank showed us the pictures of the different homes and going in five feet, and one of them was going to take $780,000, reduce your property value by that. The other one was $800,000. You're aware of that, but you still want to move forward with that?
Entirely aware of that. I believe it's minimal, and I believe Len's point was that there's, as long as it's a reasonable reduction in the potential square footage, it's going to be okay. If it's unreasonable, you're going to get a claim and you're going to lose your butt in court. So, yes, I am aware of that, and I believe that with the pattern book and incentives to come in the future, that there'll be a way to ameliorate that small amount of reduction. And here's why I think it's the way to go. What the builder, what the developers want, what, three things? Maximum square footage, maximum square footage, and maximum square footage. And what the rest of the people in town, I believe what they want is how the house, the square footage that the house looks like. Not what it is, but what it appears to be. That's why it's under appearance criteria. And as long as it doesn't appear to be big or out of place, which these items will take care of, this satisfies both sides, that it could appear to fit in town and be in harmony with what we expect in town, and we could reserve that square footage that the builders want to achieve. So I think it achieves both goals.
All right, and I just want to make note that, and Len, this came from another attorney, and I think you know him, but it says, "The measure of the damages for such loss would be the difference in the fair market value before the governmental action was taken as compared to the fair market value after such governmental action was taken." You could be talking, if you implement A and B, you could be talking 800,000 times how many? And that, to me, is significant. That, to me, could be a lawsuit. That, to me, could be a class action lawsuit. So, you know, I just wanted to state that. I know your feeling, and we can differ on it if we want. That's fine, but.
Was there a second? I didn't hear.
Yes, there was a second.
I seconded, but I would like to make sure that I understand that the motion is for the staff to continue pursuing A, B, C, and D.
To implement it.
Continue to implement it.
If I may restate it?
To adopt the proposed council directions, all the bullet points on page 134, including step A, B, C, and D, starting on page 134.
Well, I disagree with that, so I take away my second.
What part of that do you disagree with?
That 1 through 6, because 1 through 6 would take away our planning and zoning board authority. And it puts back everything with staff.
I'm fine with staff doing the review exclusively. I think that that's fine. I think that part of, some of the problems have been, I mean, as our planning and zoning board, they're laypeople, they try very hard, and overall, they do a good job. But I think that, you know, the calculations and all of that stuff, because we're not looking at the bulk scale and mass as before, those calculations need to be done exclusively by staff.
So, John, do you want to withdraw your motion, restate?
I would second John's motion.
I don't know if you can do that, or do you want John to restate his motion, and DeeDee can second it?
Well, can we?
Diana, hang on. Len, what should we do?
So, Diana, you withdrew your second.
I withdrew my second.
So can DeeDee just second it?
So DeeDee can second it, yes.
Okay, great. Let's do a roll call on that.
Well, discussion.
No, we're under discussion. If somebody doesn't like a particular piece of this, let them offer an amendment, and we'll discuss it.
Okay.
I'm open to, it's not perfect, but it gets us very close, I think, to where we need to get tonight.
Number one is amending the parents' review. And number two is create a zoning in process. I agree with the number two. Number three is amend the code to remove appearance review from single-family homes. Well, appearance review is more than just the one and two that we've talked about. So we need to pull the 34-1163B, and what are the other components of appearance review? And are we ready to get rid of those? And that's not in the memo, it's not part of backup, but it's, I think we need to look at that language. And then four is amend the code to revert the review and approval of single-family dwellings from planning zones to staff. That, when I, I think it's very important that we have a planning and zoning board and that they're actively involved, because the planning and zoning board bring the citizens' perspective to the decisions. And staff does a very good job, and they work with the citizens, but it's important that we have citizen buy-in to what's going on. Or it can't just, I don't think it should be just a staff review. I think that it should be the citizens' way in, since they're the neighbors and they're the.
Stakeholders, maybe.
Yeah, they're the stakeholders. So I think that's so important. And number five is the thing that I thought you said you didn't want to do, is removing the harmony number two for the setback scale, mass, bulk proportion, overall height, orientation, site plan. It removes that, all of those harmony criteria, is the way I read it. And then number six is amend the code to implement additional regulations. So when you said that we were going to look at A through D, I was thinking you meant number six and not the whole thing. So I agree with number six, and I agree with number two.
Rob, did you want to say something?
Yes, just to clarify. If we're using A through D in lieu of what's currently being, what's currently codified for harmony, then those are quantitative measures that staff have proposed, in which case, there's really nothing for PMZ to review after staff has determined whether the number meets the number or it doesn't, right? So if the setback is five additional feet, and staff confirm it is five additional feet, PMZ, what are they going to do after they get it? It's still the same five feet. They can't change the decision, they can't modify the decision. So instead, what you would be looking at is something more along the lines of someone coming with a hardship case and looking for a variance, in which case that would go to PMZ. If they needed a deviation from what the standards we adopt are, then it would be handled as a request for a variance from the zoning standards, because A and B are zoning regulations. So if they need a different set of rules, that would trigger automatically a referral to PMZ as a variance request with the associated standards. So it's just the role of the PMZ under the current paradigm would be different than it would be under a revised paradigm. And the primary distinction there is the subjective design stuff that we're not using anyhow, and PMZ was having problems with, is no longer part of the equation if we adopt 1 through 6. And it's purely quantitative at that point, which then puts you into the realm where PMZ's role is in the capacity of reviewing a request for variation rather than some lesser standard.
And I do appreciate Frank giving us the little boxes tonight and letting us look at what these things mean, and that was helpful. But let's take it through a couple scenarios. I mean, isn't this, aren't we going through and doing the exact same thing that Harmony's being accused of? It was approved by some definitions on a piece of paper, no one took it out into the field and said, "This is exactly what it does." Why don't we have that come back, and then we can see how these A through D are implemented in the field?
It's going to come back in first and second reading.
Yeah, it has to go through the whole process.
So we wait for the information. We wait for the information in the code. We don't have that up front. We don't know how it's going to affect us. And then we see, once we say, "Oh, yes, we want to get rid of everything that's on the books now for these four new things," and we're going to just see how they're implemented in the field at a later date. That doesn't make sense to me.
Frank, go ahead.
I think Frank tried to illuminate in his presentation.
But we didn't have that before. We had that tonight, and it was a couple of boxes. But it would take us through some homes and show what the styles look like after that.
Well, A and B are pretty straightforward, because one has a second-story setback of five feet. And so no matter which house it is, it's five feet on the second story. So there's not many variations that, you know, they would need to do to demonstrate that. And 75% of the top, really depends on how an architect designs it, but the point there is just the reduction in square footage. Then, yeah, an architect would design that in different ways, and I don't know that there's a productive path staff can take to explain it more than that. You know, mathematically, it's five feet off the setback on the side and 75%. And I think we can all grasp what the impact of that is on a particular lot. We may not be able to project it on every lot, because each architect will handle it differently. But I think the question of impact itself, if that's what's motivating the request to have staff bring something back, is one that probably wouldn't be a productive staff assignment because it is what it is on its face.
Okay, so now let's look at Senate Bill 180. So if we pursue this path and we're a zoning in process, and Senate Bill 180 passes, then what happens after that passes?
That would sort of put an end to it.
So at that.
Because it would be more restrictive.
So at that point, we wait till 2027 to vote on whatever is brought back to us. So we can keep what we've had, you know, up until now for the last year, which is not working, but at least there is some analysis and comparison to the other neighborhood, or, or we get nothing until 2027.
I don't think it should.
That's how I see this.
Be in fear of Senate Bill 180, you know, it's kind of paralyzing, isn't it, for you to be?
It is. We have to wait until the governor signs it.
I have to finish my, my sentence.
Okay.
So we can't, we can't be paralyzed by that. I think we have to move forward as well and make the decisions that's right for the town.
I would, I have a question. Frank, would that help you doing your job?
That's a trick question. Be smiling.
Trick question.
It, it would clarify a lot of things for staff.
Okay, I, I think, I need to, we need to kind of keep moving. We're on these six bullet points, and John, if you want to go through each one of them and have council discussion on each one, we're not going to make it through, just so we all know. So if that's what we want to do, we're going to have to continue the conversation at the next meeting, I think. Unless we want to, because I need to get through a couple more items. We might have 10 minutes.
I don't need to go into any more detail at all.
Could I ask a question, please? I'm just wondering, from staff's perspective, can other mechanisms be added or taken away at a later time pending legislation? Or once we do this, this is unamendable?
No, it's, it's not, it's not unamendable. It's not, it's not the law until it passes on second reading.
So if we need to find somehow that there's some other adjustment that needs to be made or, or that we want to consider, we can consider it or add another element or discuss another element? If, if something comes to light of whatever nature.
Yes, because just, just, this is very general, what we gave you today. We're going to look at it, you know, in detail. And there are other zoning districts that have different setbacks, you know, you know, 15 feet total, five, 10, seven and a half, seven and a half. Perhaps for those, we, we have to do something different. But all of that, we need the direction first from council, so that we can start putting our time and effort into it. And it's going to go to the planning and zoning board, and then twice to you guys, so.
So can they vote against us taking away their review?
They, they can recommend.
They just make a recommendation. And also, if, if this motion passes, it does become a zoning in progress. We can formalize it. But if you've given directions to staff to proceed with these changes, it becomes a zoning in progress, and any new applications are going to have to comply with these, and it might, I mean, we can accept them, but we can't approve them until we're gone through this process.
So do we want to do a roll call?
Okay.
Mayor Wheeler?
Can I hear the motion one more time?
The motion is to adopt the proposed council direction as outlined in staff's memorandum, including A, B, C, and D.
I'm going to be a nay, just because I don't want A and B in there.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
Hey, you got something, Rob. Frank? That's all we have to do on this one, right?
All we have to do on that one.
Um, I, you know, we appreciate all the efforts from, from staff. Trust me, we know how much work this has been, Stephen and Frank, and, you know, Rob, you got into the middle of this, so, you know, thank you so much for all the work that you guys have done on this. And I think, you know, whether right or wrong, we're making headway, right? We're trying to work it out together. Okay, so let's go back and go through the other two items that we had.
Number 11 and 12.
Eleven and 12.
Do you need to, do you want to discuss yours quickly, Diana? Item 11?
Item 12, I mean, the 11 is the aquatic weed and algae control, and I, I agree with using the Aquathal for initial kill of the aquatic weeds. That's for that niad. But the things I wanted to discuss is, I understand that we're already treating for algae, but it's not working. So we're going to continue to use the same algae chemical treatment even though it's not working? I understand that the, that the marine niad floats the surface, so it, and facilitates the algae growth, but I would, I would like to pursue technologies for the algae that does work. And, and it's my understanding that this, this Aquathal for the marine niad is not going to impact the sterile grass-eating carp that we're going to add to the lake. And I, I would like the spray logs to be available, and those spray logs have to say what was applied, when it was applied, and what the dosage is. Other than that, I'm fine with, I'd make a motion to follow the direction of staff to work with Sean Patton and address algae in our lake and the marine niad with the, the Aquathal.
We need to snack.
I'll second.
Yeah, I, I looked, I looked at the safety data sheets for the chemicals, and then I also looked at this pesticide action and agromy, agroecology network, and this is relatively new chemical. They didn't have a lot of information about its toxicity. I'm fine with it.
Mayor, may I make a clarification?
Mm-hmm.
For this treatment of the Aquathal, does staff need to continuously come to council when they do the treatments? Or are they okay to proceed?
Is that, that's what one of it says in here, right?
Yeah, the direction being sought from staff is to authorize the application management protocol as proposed by Sean, our environmental consultant, and in coordination with staff, and on a moving forward basis, to enable us to be more agile in responding to changing lake conditions by simply working directly with that lake consultant and implementing whatever recommended strategies there are, of course, within our budget constraints, but without the necessity of having to come back every time a chemical might change, because chemical names come and go, different needs come and go, different plant. The overarching premise, though, is we want to make sure that the chemicals are safe for their intended use, they target the appropriate biological entity that they're supposed to target, and don't harm other things in the water. And that's one of the reasons why we have our, our lake consultant to help. We don't want to delay necessary lake management actions in the future by virtue of having to schedule a council meeting and bring it to you guys to discuss and approve, simply because it involves the chemical. Again, we're looking for a motion that authorizes the current application and, moving forward, for us to work with our lake consultant to implement whatever lake management strategies are necessary without further council review and approval.
Can we get that motion? That full motion, please? Or amend the motion? Diana, you made the motion, do you want to amend that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand how I'm supposed to amend it, so somebody else can go ahead.
It, it's basically to authorize staff to implement any combination of management techniques recommended by the town's environmental consultant, which is Sean Patton, as needed to maintain the health and appearance of Pelican Lake without requiring prior approval from town council for each treatment.
I, I'm, I'm, I'd like to make the motion as stated, but with the amendment that those spray logs be available to town council, and, and if the chemical changes, that we get alerted at that notice.
Is that doable?
Second for the point of discussion.
It, it, is her request doable as far as the spray logs? Is that?
It's required. You have to keep the spray log, but it's just historically, they haven't always been, let's say, detail. They say somebody came on a particular day, and you don't get the.
But you don't, it doesn't tell you what they sprayed with.
Yeah, and I'm talking ancient history, so that's probably been corrected. But we just need to make sure that it's noted that we want those.
I, I would agree with that.
Do a roll call? Yes. Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and item number 12, that's a native plant donation by the ecology group, and I just want to make sure we have transparency on this item, Diane, so that's why I'm bringing it up. We have to make note that you're president, and I think Red is vice president, and William Kimball is the other member on the board, right?
Emperor Levellus, too.
Okay. And I know you guys filed a solicitation log as a not-for-profit organization, but the proceeds, if I'm not mistaken, the proceeds are from the Cyclide and Tilapia event.
That's not all the proceeds. That for, that bought these ferns, I, it's not all from the Cyclide-Tilapia event.
Okay, do you have, is it from another event?
Can I ask a question?
No, hang on, I'm not finished. Sorry, DeeDee, just a second. Is it from another event, Diane?
Donations. Donations.
Okay, the reason I'm bringing it up is because I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about any ethical conflicts of interest on where the money is coming from. And the reason is, I know we have Frenchman's Beach Club coming in, FPL coming in eventually. I know they're coming in before us. Seminole Golf Club has been before us, maybe not for a while, Juno Beach Police Foundation. I know they all donated. So my concern is, you know, first of all, as a council member, I don't want to see you have to recuse yourself, because we need five members here. And if there's any reason that you would have to recuse yourself, that could become an issue. But I also have a, just a little bit of a concern, and I'm just bringing it out, we don't have to vote on it, everyone can decide how they feel about it independently, but I have a concern that any money that could come from FPL, and they're going to be before us, anything else that we're dealing with, I, you know, and even if there is nothing wrong with it, I think it's the perception to have, you know, board members soliciting and then taking funds that could be from entities coming before us. I just want to bring that out, and it's just transparency. We don't have to discuss it, I just wanted to bring it out. So if somebody wanted to make a motion to approve that, that's fine, and we can.
I have a question, if I may.
Okay.
So I'm, I guess I'm a little bit confused, because when we got the donation of the police dog, you're on the board of the Big Dog Ranch, and the dog or the money or something came from the Big Dog Ranch. So I'm not sure why.
I think it came from Lori Simmons personally, but.
But you're on the board, so isn't that similar to Diana being on the board?
I don't think Big Dog Ranch Rescue is coming before us.
But it was part of accepting that dog as a gift, that there was the tie, there was still ties there, and so isn't that similar to Diana's situation, because she's still tied to the donation, and we didn't question?
I know, I don't think so, because there's solicitation going on directly to those corporations and the taking of the money and being.
I don't know. I'm still talking, but I, I guess my, my question or concern is, I don't recall that we've really ever asked any of the other donors where their source of funding comes from. We, you know, we, to my knowledge, we don't ask anybody, so I don't know that we should be asking Diana the source of her funding.
Well, I, I think it's responsible for us to know this. If, if we're getting money from FPL, there she is, and it's coming forward to us, then, you know, we just have to be aware of all of this. I'm not saying we have to deny it.
But, no.
I'm only paying it out to everybody's attention.
That any other organization who comes before us for donations, so for instance, tonight there was a donation from the Police Foundation, but we didn't pull that off the agenda and ask them where the source of that money came from.
But you know where the source is.
We do not know.
Well, from the.
There's no proof. We, we don't know.
I think, Len, can you explain this a little bit better? Because this is people that are coming before us, that we're going to be making decisions on, or.
So the rule, the county ethics rule is about solicitation, that you can solicit funds for a nonprofit, you just can't solicit from someone with a pending application. So even if it was solicited from somebody who might have an application in the future, as long as there was no quid pro quo or promise in exchange for the donation, it's okay under the ethics code.
And I knew that, and I'm just bringing it out to be transparent in case anything comes out in the future, so.
So I'd like to ask you a question. I didn't go to that, to the Palm Beach North Chamber Pelican Club event, because frankly, I didn't want to have to report it. I know you went. Did you report that to the ethics? Because I, I, I did accept their art show, because we were trying to find artists for the Coretta Project, and also I, I accepted that art show, and they said it was a $300 value, that getting in the gates $20, and then there was some food provided, but it was, so I had to report that as well. I mean, these are all ethics reports that you're required to file. Did you file your Pelican Club? And how much did they say that that was worth?
I think they gave you a drink and a couple.
You can't, but they have their own values. They told me I had to report $300.
You don't have to file, Diana, unless it's over $100, is that correct, Len?
Well, I'm sure it was, Peggy, because getting a $20 ticket into the art fest was, they said it was a $300 value.
This was a complimentary, you get.
No, you need to look it up, because you really do need to report that.
Wait, 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 Diana, stop, stop. I'm not going to let you go on with that. Is reporting, how much was the entrance fee? I don't think there was an entrance fee whatsoever to.
No, that's not the point, Peggy. You have to tell them how much they value their tickets. What do they value their ticket at for a Pelican Club?
It's under $100. You do not have to, to report it, it was under $100. It was a drink.
Well, I'll ask them how much it was.
That's fine.
Then the other thing, Ferrera, that's the same person who said they were, that they could rebuild as a gazebo for $300,000. I would have liked to have known at the time that we got that bid that they were funding the lights for the Police Foundation. I mean, it's just something that should have been, yes, the Police Found, they're a board member on the Police Foundation, and they're funding these other sources. It would have been nice to say, I did send my ethics report through Caitlin, so it would be, so the town would have it. I guess that's why you looked at for what the Ecology Group did. We're 504, 501(c)(3) organization, we're a separate organization.
I agree with that. I, and I, I'm going to latch on to that, I didn't know anything about the lights, that never came to the council. If we're accepting big donations like that, it bypassed us completely, and that is a transparency issue. We approve all these other donations, well, where, why did we not see that? So if we're talking about transparency and equal observation on these different groups, then why are some groups scrutinized and asked the origin of their funds, and other groups, whether it's Frenchman's Creek or anybody, why are we not, you know, if, if we're going to put one through that scrutiny, then it has to be equal. It can't be where we're singling out one group to scrutinize. It, it's all or nothing.
Yeah, who are we scrutinizing right now?
Ecology Group.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that we just needed to bring it out and be transparent, that the funds that you took in for another event that's being donated for the.
Those are not from the, from the Pelican, they're not from our fishing tournament. The ferns were separate, it was in the account before that. Thank you.
I, I don't see that that makes a difference. I, I.
Well, I, Len, when someone's coming before us, as long as they don't have a pending application, I mean, if, you know.
So this is why the Police Foundation donations should be back on the regular agenda, so we can ask the same question of them as we do of Frenchman's Creek, as we do of anybody else who's donating. I don't think the Ecology Group should be singled out in this, you know, at this moment to, to be scrutinized like that and ask where the source of their funds are coming from, because, again, I'm, I'm being repetitive now. It, it applies to all groups who are donating and not just the Ecology Group. So it was very unfair to pull that request and not pull the Police Foundation request, because we could also similarly ask, show us where that money came from. Did it come from a fundraiser? Did it come from wherever? We don't know.
You can do that, DeeDee.
The truth is, we don't know about any of the groups. So don't scrutinize the Ecology Group without scrutinizing everybody equally.
It wasn't scrutinizing, I was.
It is.
I was making a point that that money, I was, my understanding, came from the Cyclide and Tilapia Tournament. And so that's why I wanted to bring it out, because I knew FPL, I knew all those four entities did put money into it, and if they're coming before us, then it could be an issue. I don't care if we scrutinize every, all of them, we can ask the same question, because we need to be fair with all of them. But if we're taking money in for something, and we have those questions, or we just want to make sure it's transparent, then it's fine to do that. You know, I think it's a great thing that you've done, Diane. I think the Ecology Group has done a great thing, and thank you for the donation. But I, I did have to bring that out. But I did have to bring that out.
So I'll make a motion to accept the donation of plants from the Juno Beach Ecology Group.
I'll second it.
I'll conduct the roll call.
I'm still concerned about it, so I'm going to go nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Proton Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasta?
Gifts are always good. Aye.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, we've got council comments, and we have a little over 10 minutes, so a couple minutes each. DeeDee, do you want to start?
I've forgotten anything I wanted to say. It's been so long. No, I'll pass. I'll have extra questions at the next meeting. Oh, wait, I did remember one thing. We need an update on some of the initiatives that are happening here. That's what I wanted to say. We haven't gotten an update on the master plan, the strategic plan, the vulnerability study. I'd like to know where those are, because council's met with representatives from each of those groups or individuals who was working on these plans, but we haven't gotten any tangible status update lately. And normally, this time of year, we're having our goal-setting meeting. And I don't know if we're waiting for that strategic plan, but I don't think that strategic plan should hold us back from discussing goal-setting, because it shouldn't hold us up.
Sure, we'll get an update on that. And I would also encourage that when we have opportunity for weekly council member meetings, we can also talk about, you know, anything that we haven't updated.
We ran out of time.
Get a reminder, yes, we did.
Okay, but, you know, maybe staff could bring us an update, you know, or you could bring us an update. And what are we doing about goal-setting this year? Does council want to discuss that? Are we going to have a goal-setting meeting?
Usually happens in May, doesn't it? And we're getting it now.
Yeah, I hope we have a strategic plan, and that encompasses all of that, that we've been working on for the last year.
We can set a goal-setting for June if we want.
And I know, John, what are your thoughts?
I'm against it.
You're against it?
Goal-setting.
Against goal-setting, or the strategic plan, or everything?
I'm against having a goal-setting meeting. I was instrumental in the first goal-setting meeting when I got in council in 2006. The point was, there was new council members that got elected, Jim Lyons and myself, new manager, and the point was, we didn't have any relationship with the manager or each other, and we were setting different policies that were in place. There was a lot on the table, and it was necessary. I looked at the last few goal-setting meetings, and I don't see where they were all that productive or anything we couldn't accomplish at regular council meetings. So I think it's one less afternoon that we could spend on other issues like the budget.
Okay, thanks for the feedback.
Mary Ann?
Well, I just wanted to say, we have planned, we are still planning this workshop on the Code for Council Conduct. Is that so? Okay, all right, June 2nd. I thought that wasn't necessary until tonight, when I heard people screaming at each other, not waiting for their turn to talk. It was a very, I hope not too many people watched the last 30 minutes of this meeting. It was a disgrace. And I think we need to set that straight, that that should not happen, ever. Thank you.
Including the reading of nasty emails.
So I, too, am interested in strategic plan. I'm looking forward to moving forward with the strategic plan. I'd also like to see the plan for record-keeping from now moving forward, and also the efforts that Aldo Rivera and John Calligan have helped with, and how we're moving forward to digitize those. And quality improvement. I think the gazebo is a perfect study for quality improvement tools and bringing those in. I think we need training, so I think it's a good part of the budget analysis and that operational excellence. And I would prefer personally that the legal memos on issues come to council, and then council decides what the policy should be for the town. And instead of the legal decisions from Lynn Rubin going to the staff, and the staff deciding based on their interpretation what the policy should be, and then give us a memo that says if we want to do anything else that we're violating the law or violating a statute. I know from my personal experience, when you're reporting to a board, you give them the risk and the opportunities of all the decisions, like the whole menu of decisions, you know, and tell them what those risks are. And that's the kind of thing I would want from our town attorney, and I think if we should give him the authority to move forward in that manner. Instead of it going through staff and staff saying that, based on this, we can, we only have this one option for moving forward. So that's my plan, and I hope that can be wrapped into the quality improvement, what our processes are with our town attorney and with our staff. Thank you.
John?
Just like to thank the town manager and planning director for all their hard work on this harmony issue the last few months. I know they spent a lot of extra time on it, a lot of thought, a lot of research, and I personally appreciate it, and I think our town's better off for it.
Thank you. I want to congratulate the award recipients for the Police Department, also Employees of the Year. That was great, they're all gone now. But I was with Representative Caruso this morning, and he'll be happy to come in after session and speak with us. And of course, we can include Senator Harrell with that. And talking about protocols, I'm just wondering if we can get a consensus and maybe have Rob, who's been with us at least a couple of times now, maybe come up with some protocols that he senses we need, and just kind of give those to us at our June 2nd workshop that we're having.
Are we talking about code of conduct? Because that language has already been written by the Lynn. So we could just have Rob review Lynn's language.
Yeah, not to change any of--
You might find in the agenda pack is that we've already done what you're asking us to do, and we've already looked at what Lynn did, and we've added some additional material. Both Caitlin and I did substantial research of protocols and procedures from other communities. We started out with 30 pages of material, and went a little back down to something that we thought, hey, these are some good ideas, let's weave that in and let council react to them. So I think you'll find that we've done exactly what you're asking us to do. And will it be perfect? We'll see. We can work through it and talk about all of the recommendations that are in there.
And is it in this notebook or is it for the workshop?
It's for the workshop.
Can I ask a question? May I? What format will that June 2nd workshop take? Could you just--
Similar to this town council meeting, because only council's participating.
So we're just here at the--
I would call it a work session rather than a workshop, actually. So we want to, over time, use workshop, council meeting, and work session a little bit differently, where work session would imply, this is an issue for council to kind of work through amongst itself, and then there would be subsequent, you know, public engagement opportunities. But a work session specifically focused internally on council, no public comment unless the presiding officer should decide to entertain public comment. But public comment would not be necessary in terms of what the task is in front of the council during a work session setting. And I would use work session for protocols and code of conduct.
Could I ask the format? Are we going to be at the dais or a table?
Dais.
The dais? Just like this?
And we're working on microphones for the next time we're in a less formal environment, because we don't want a case where our sound system is not properly functioning. So that's as an aside. If it were less formal out in the floor, we would certainly still want to make sure those microphones are working.
It's kind of nice to have us in a little circle or out there where it's more informal, and we can actually talk about this stuff, especially if we're going to get some protocols and, you know, I think it's--
This layout is a little bit difficult for conversations. I think the problem, I know Diana and I, whoever, we're using the battery-operated microphones, those were inaudible. So, I mean, as long as the cord on these is long enough to stretch down, we could put the table closer to the dais.
That's why all the ones that are up here are not movable. It's the ones down there that are at the podiums, which were the ones that we had brought down to staff's table. The wireless, although they work for the speaker up there, they are not from the system. They're from the old system. We have wireless microphones that are working with IT with the adaptable components.
I mean, how much is one more of these? $2,000 or something?
I have to relook at it, I think it's, there's an itemized list.
It'd be beneficial to buy an additional one.
Could we have a facilitator? That was one of the criticisms for the workshop that we had on Harmony, that perhaps we needed a facilitator, and that a neutral party that could have moved things along and have us actually working on some of the things that maybe were in this booklet that we didn't have at the workshop. But, you know, ways to address the specific issues.
I'll nominate Rob Cole.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Least expensive way to go.
I wanted to make sure that we thank the staff for the food truck night, that they gave up their first night of a long weekend, and I know that it was a big sacrifice, but the people that attended really enjoyed it. Thank you.
May I just confirm the format for the Monday workshop? Council's okay with Rob as the facilitator and to be at the dais?
I would like, well, a round table--
As long as everyone can hear each other. Round table.